Good afternoon, everyone. I am Dan Ghorodnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's review session of the City Planning Commission. We're joined today by Commissioners Benjamin Cerulo, Dweck, Gold, Goodrich, Kermani, Marine, Osorio, and Rampershat. Welcome to all of you. Before we get to today's agenda, just like to take a minute to go over some recent news from the Department of City Planning. Earlier this month, we launched the public engagement process for the Manhattan Plan, an ambitious initiative to tackle Manhattan's deep housing shortage by adding 100,000 new homes to the borough over the next decade. Manhattan has traditionally been a place where people come to pursue opportunity, but for too many New Yorkers, the chance to live in Manhattan has fallen out of reach. This plan will help ensure that more people of more income levels can live close to jobs, transit, and everything the borough has to offer. We want to hear from New Yorkers on where they want to see more housing in Manhattan. I encourage everyone, especially Manhattanites, to visit manhattanplan.nyc to learn more and fill out our survey. And we'll have many events coming soon to a Manhattan neighborhood near you. I'd also like to express my deep appreciation to Queens Community Boards One and Two for voting yes with conditions on the One LIC Neighborhood Plan. With this proposal, more New Yorkers of all income levels will be able to call this dynamic neighborhood home, live close to their jobs, and enjoy new amenities like expanded public waterfront space. We look forward to continuing to work with this community on how we can create a more equitable, vibrant, and welcoming Long Island city. Now, let's get to today's agenda. We'll begin with a proposal to build over 240 new homes at 21714 24th Avenue in Bay Terrace, Queens. Fifty-five of those homes will be permanently income-restricted affordable, and 65 of them will be dedicated to long-term care for seniors. The site sits near the Bayside Marina and the Joe Michaels Mile. Staying in Queens, we'll learn about a mixed-use proposal for Woodside, located at 6312 Broadway. This building would contain nearly 70 homes, over 20 of them permanently income-restricted affordable, as well as ground-floor retail. With the 65th Street M and R subway station less than two blocks away from the project site, this is a great example of transit-oriented development, something that we expect to see more of, thanks to City of Yash for housing opportunity. I'm also happy to note that this is the first project in Queens to take advantage of Green Fast Track, which provides a streamlined environmental review process for small and medium-sized, climate-friendly housing projects, helping get shovels in the ground faster. 6312 Broadway only took eight months to complete its environmental review, about half the time it would typically take for a project like this one to advance. We're next going to hear about a proposed acquisition by the Department of Parks and Recreation. The agency seeks to acquire Prospect Farm to preserve its use as a community garden. Since 2010, this garden has been an active member of the neighborhood, providing healthy local food and a spot to drop off food scraps for composting. From there, we're going to look at some follow-up actions to the Atlantic Avenue Mixed-Use Plan, also known as AIMUP. This initiative, which you all know very well, was voted on by the City Council in late May, which will bring 4,600 new homes, 2,800 permanent jobs, and over $230 million in infrastructure investments to central Brooklyn. The actions before us today follow through on commitments made by the Department of City Planning to Council members Crystal Hudson and Chi Ose during the AIMUP planning process. On a few blocks between Atlantic Avenue and Bergen Street and Grand Avenue and Franklin Avenue that are zoned for residential and industrial, we would limit around half of the incentive FAR for non-residential uses to several specific uses, including light industrial, community facilities, arts, and repair. This change would help incentivize the light industrial and creative economies along these blocks. Only a couple of blocks down Atlantic Avenue in the same neighborhood, we'll discuss next a requested height waiver for the development of a mixed-use building at 870 to 888 Atlantic Avenue with over 250 homes and a fresh supermarket on the ground floor. The waiver would allow the building to add one story, bringing its total height to 19 stories. Next up, we have an application by the Department of Environmental Protection to upgrade the Mayflower Avenue Pumping Station on the south shore of Staten Island. The agency looks to construct a new service building, force main, and interim pumping station, along with several upgrades to rehabilitate the existing station. We will also review City Council mods to three proposals. The first is Carmen Viejas Apartments, a proposal by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development for a 100% income-restricted building at 100 East 111th Street in East Harlem, with 210 new homes, almost 150 of them dedicated to low-income seniors, as well as LGBTQ+ senior community facility. The second is a residential development that would bring nearly 300 income-restricted affordable homes for seniors to 109 Marcus Garvey Boulevard in Bed-Stuy in Brooklyn. And the third is a mixed-use building with around 30 homes, a third of them income-restricted affordable, and ground-floor retail on North 7th Street in Williamsburg, Brooklyn. To close, we're going to go over the testimony we heard at recent public hearings for several items before us, including the proposed enlargement and renovation of Lenox Hill Hospital. So lots on the docket today. Madam Secretary, let's go ahead and get started.
Good afternoon and welcome to the City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, June 30th, 2025. The time is 1:06 PM and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a certification of zoning map and zoning tax amendments in Queens Community District 11. Our presenter is Tal Chen.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Good afternoon, Chair Ghorodnik. Great. Today, we have the 21714 24th Avenue Rezoning Project from the Bay Terrace neighborhood of Queens CD11 for certification.
It looks like we've lost the screens. We'll give it one second. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Great. This is a private application from Barone Management and Apex Development Group, doing business as BBMT LLC, and they're requesting two zoning actions, a zoning map amendment to change the existing R12 zoning districts to an R6A zoning district, and a zoning tax amendment to map for mandatory inclusionary housing. The project is located at 21714 24th Avenue in Bay Terrace, Queens, Community District 11, which is in Council District 19, represented by Council Member Vicky Palladino. The proposed actions would facilitate the redevelopment of 21714 24th Avenue with a new eight-story residential and senior long-term care facility building with approximately 183 dwelling units, of which 30% or 55 units would be permanently income-restricted at an average affordability level not exceeding 80% of area median income, pursuant to often two of the city's mandatory inclusionary housing program, and approximately 65 senior long-term care units. Additionally, the proposed below-grade parking garage would include up to 86 accessory off-street parking spaces, which is more than the required number, and this development will replace the Bay Terrace Country Club, a private club that includes a 2,800 square feet clubhouse with concessions and outdoor pool and playground. The project's area is located in the Bay Terrace neighborhood of Community District 11. It sits just west of the Cross Island Parkway, which hugs the coast of Little Neck Bay to the east, although the development does not directly abut the Parkway. The Clearview Expressway lies to the west, and it connects the area to Sock Next Bridge to the north. The Bay Terrace Shopping Center, a typical suburban mall with surface parking, is a seven-minute walk west of the development site. There are several open space resources in the area, including the Joe Michaels Mile, a promenade that runs parallel to the Cross Island Parkway, to which residents can access via a footbridge at 28th Avenue to the south. It connects the Cross Road Park further south, Fort Totten, and Little Park to the north. There's also the Clearview Park Golf Course to the west of the Clearview Expressway. Several public transit options are available in the area. With the Queens bus network redesign, there will be two bus lines providing connections to the Bayside Long Island Railroad Station and two express bus routes to Manhattan, starting just north of the aforementioned Bay Terrace Shopping Center, with another express service, QM20, starting nearby as well. The surrounding area is predominantly residential with a mix of densities that are largely consistent with the underlying zoning districts. The project's area is within the northeastern... I apologize. The project area is within the northeastern part of the R12 zoning district, but it should be noted that to the nearby sites of the nearby R5 district, there are three 16- to 17-story residential units in the R5 district. And to the north, on the top of this image, we can see a 21-story building also existing there, also in the existing R5 zoning districts. The development site is in the waterfront revitalization program's coastal zone boundary and is just on the edge of the 2020 0.2% annual trans floodplain. Here's a quick look at the existing conditions of the site, facing the existing cul-de-sac at the end of 24th Avenue, where pedestrian and vehicular access to the residential and senior long-term care facility lobby areas will be located. Here's a view looking into the existing Bay Terrace Country Club. Here's a view looking north of 24th Avenue, where a new public school and a new playground by New York City Parks is planned. Here's another look at the development site. Moving on to some illustrative site plans, the requested action was facilitate an eight-story, 85-foot-tall residential building with 183 units. MIH Options One and Two will be mapped, to which the applicant intends to pursue Option Two, to set aside approximately 55 units to be permanently income-restricted. We can see how the entrance is planned with the existing cul-de-sac at the end of 24th Avenue, and the entrance to the below-grade garage can be seen to the south where the car is coming out on the right of the image. Here is the site plan. The residential and care facility entrances are located at the cul-de-sac at the end of 24th Avenue. The proposed development also includes a rear yard on the southern edge of the property, in compliance with the proposed zoning. And lastly, here's an illustrative elevation diagram of the building. The building will have senior living facilities on the first and second floors, and the rest will be residential. To facilitate the proposed development, the applicant proposes a zoning map amendment from an existing R12 zoning district to R6A zoning districts, and zoning tax amendment to map for MIH Options One and Two, to which the applicant intends to pursue Option Two. The existing R12 district is a residential district with a maximum residential FAR of 0.75 and a maximum height of 35 feet. The proposed R6A zoning district is a contextual district that permits residential and community facility uses. In R6A districts, the maximum FAR is 3.9 for residential use and MIH areas with a maximum building height of 95 feet, while the maximum FAR for community facilities use is 3.0. R6A zoning districts require off-street parking for 50% of dwelling units and 25% of qualifying affordable housing units. A quick look at the MIH options. Option Two, which is what the applicant intends to pursue, requires 30% of the residential floor area to be designated for permanently affordable housing units. Looking at the local rate-traditional equity report, as required by the total floor area of this development, here is a breakdown of the income requirements per MIA as opposed to the market rate units that are proposed by this development. Looking, between 2017 and 2021, the median household income in the community district was 62,000... Sorry. The median household income in the community district was 62,000, which was less than estimates for Queens and New York City at about 75,000 and 76,000, respectively. The estimated monthly rent of income-restricted units for households at 80% of area median income in 2025 ranges from around $2,270 for a studio up to $3,370 for a three-bedroom. The estimated average income for households earning at 80% AMI range from around $90,000 for a one-person household up to around $140,000 for a five-person household. The applicant is proposing 30% of units be income-restricted at an average of 80% of AMI in line with MIH Option Two. The project area is located within the Flushing, College Point, Murray Hill, and Whitestone area, home to approximately 271,000 residents. Of this population, around 57% identified as Asian/Non-Hispanic, 2% identified as Black/Non-Hispanic, 18% identified as Hispanic, and around 21% identified as White/Non-Hispanic. The remaining 2% identified as Non-Hispanic of some other race or combination of races. The Asian population makes up more than double the local share of the population than it does in all of Queens, and more than triple the local share of the population than it does in all of New York City. Between 2010 and 2020, the total population in this area increased 9%, roughly the same as the 8% growth seen at the Queens and New York City level. While Asian and Non-Hispanic population groups saw increases during this period, Black/Non-Hispanic and White/Non-Hispanic groups saw a decrease in population. To summarize, the applicant proposes a zoning map amendment from R12 to an R6A zoning district, and a zoning tax amendment to Appendix F to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area with Options One and Two, to facilitate the development of an approximately eight-story mixed-use building containing 183 dwelling units, including 55 income-restricted units and 65 senior long-term care units. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. And before we move this one to certification, let's start with Commissioner Benjamin.
I have two questions. The first one is, when this comes back, could you make sure...
When this comes back, could you make sure that the applicant provides a distribution for us of the apartment sizes? But number two, as always, I'm concerned about what we mean when we say affordable. If you can go back to Slide 20. The average income in this district, you said, was 62,000, which is lower than the low-income apartments, which would mean that many of the people who live here would not even qualify for any of these apartments. And that, I think, is a problem. And secondly, that the non-income-restricted apartments, the expected rental levels are lower than the 80% or low-income rental levels, which is, for me, a significant issue about why we're doing MIH.
Of course. Yeah. MIH takes consideration of AMI, which takes into account of New York City as a whole. And the other benefit would be that it is permanently income-restricted, as opposed to market rates, which will see fluctuations year by year. And per your question about apartment size distribution, the difference, obviously, for studios are better significant, but the difference for three-bedrooms are less drastic, and of course, with the added benefit of less fluctuations year by year. But I will follow up for sure about the apartment size.
Okay. And how many of each they're intending?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks so much for the presentation. When we see it again, it would be great if you can elaborate a little bit on what is the plan to adapt to flooding. As you noted, you're right, under the current floodplain, it is just outside, but if you start looking at the projections even back to 2020, the property is already affected. It's already within the 100-year floodplain, and so I think that this should be anticipated. The other thing is, in addition to coastal inundation, the stormwater maps from DFE already also show that 24th Avenue and the Parkway are compromised, and so I would like to see a little bit more information on that.
Understood. We'll relay that to the applicant.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner. Okay. Thank you. This item is certified. We'll pick it up down the line. Thank you. All right, Madam Secretary, next, number two.
The second item on our agenda is a certification of zoning map and zoning tax amendments in Queens Community District Two. Our presenter is Feigula Luschner.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Good afternoon, Chair Ghorodnik.
Good afternoon and welcome.
Okay. Today, I'm presenting the 6312 Broadway rezoning from the Woodside neighborhood of Queens in Community District Two for certification. This is a private application by Broadway Realty LLC for two actions. A zoning map amendment to change the existing R5C22 zoning district to R7A and R5 zoning districts with a C24 commercial overlay, and a zoning tax amendment to Appendix F to match mandatory inclusionary housing co-terminus of the project area for Option One and Two. This project is located at 6312 Broadway in Woodside, Queens, Community District Two, which is Council District 26, represented by Council Member Julie Wong. The proposed actions would facilitate the redevelopment of 6312 Broadway with a new nine-story mixed-use building with approximately 67 dwelling units, of which 30% or 22 units would be permanently income-restricted at an average affordability level not to exceed 80% of the area median income, pursuant to Option Two of the city's mandatory inclusionary housing program. Additionally, the ground floor will include approximately 9,200 square feet of commercial floor area. No accessory parking spaces will be provided, and 23 bicycle parking spaces will be provided in the cellar. The development would have a base height of 83 feet, with a setback at the eighth story and a maximum building height of approximately 93 feet. This is an aerial view facing north showing the project area in the context of the surrounding neighborhoods. The project area is located on Broadway, a 100-feet-wide street between 63rd Street and 64th Street, both narrow streets, in Woodside, Queens. The rectangular project area covers the northern half of the block. To the northeast across the BQE is the neighborhood of Jackson Heights, and to the southeast is the neighborhood of Elmhurst. The surrounding area is characterized by medium-to-low-density residential, commercial, and mixed-use buildings, consistent with the underlying zoning. The subject block is comprised of one- and two-family homes and three-story walk-ups with ground-floor commercial. This project is located within the inner transit zone and is well-served by public transportation. The 65th Street Station along the M and R Lines is located one block east of the project area. The 61st Street Woodside Station along the Seven Line and the Woodside LIRR stop is located .4 miles southwest of the project area. And the 74th Street Jackson Heights Roosevelt Ave Transit Hub is located .4 miles east of the project area, which connects the Seven, the E, the F, M, and R trains. The two major open spaces in the surrounding area is the approximately one-acre General Heart Playground, which is at the intersection of 69th Street and Broadway, one block east of the project area, and Travers Park, and approximately two-acre park and playground located 3/4 of a mile to the northeast of the project area. As seen here, the project area is located in a predominantly residential neighborhood. The project area was mapped with an R5C22 commercial district in 1961 and has not been rezoned since. The project area is located one block north of the Woodside-Sunnyside rezoning adopted in 2011, which maintained the lower-density character of the neighborhood while allowing for a moderate increase in residential and commercial density along Queens Boulevard and Greenpoint Ave. The surrounding area is mapped with R5, R5D, and R41 zoning districts. The subject block and blocks directly opposite the project area have a C22 commercial overlay. The surrounding area is primarily developed with mixed-use residential and commercial buildings between two and five stories. Today, the development site is improved with a one-story commercial building with six tenants, and the other lots within the project area are improved with two-story, two- and three-family residential buildings, as well as two-story mixed residential and commercial buildings. And I'll show you the project area. Here is a view facing southeast from Broadway, with the development site outlined in red. The project area includes the entire street frontage. Here is a view facing northwest from the corner of Broadway and 64th Street. Broadway is a wide street, and this section of Broadway serves as a local commercial corridor for the neighborhood. Looking northwest from 64th Street, you can see the development site on the corner, and the project area is extending to the mid-block. And lastly, here is a view looking southeast from the intersection of Broadway and 63rd Street. You can see the entire frontage here. As proposed, the requested actions would facilitate a nine-story, approximately 55,500-square-foot mixed-use building with 67 units. 22 of these units would be set aside as permanently income-restricted pursuant to MIH Option Two. The applicant is proposing approximately 9,200 square feet of commercial space on the ground floor. The commercial entrance to the building would be accessible from Broadway, and an entrance to a dedicated residential lobby would be located on 64th Street in close proximity to Broadway. The proposed development will also include open space amenities for residents at the second floor and ninth floor terraces. To facilitate the proposed development, the applicant proposes a zoning map amendment from an existing R5C22 zoning district to R7A-C24 and R5-C24 zoning districts, and a zoning tax amendment to map MIH Option One and Two. The proposed rezoning will permit more residential development than is allowed today, and the proposed commercial overlay will reduce the parking requirements for commercial uses in an area that is well-served by transit today. The existing R5C22 district is a residential district with a maximum residential FAR of 2.0. R7A is a contextual district typically mapped along major thoroughfares and produces nine-to-eleven-story apartments. R7A allows a maximum residential FAR of 5.01 for MIH developments and a maximum building height of 115 feet. The C24 commercial overlay allows an FAR for commercial uses up to 2.0 when fronting a wide street, which this project does. The project area is located within the inner transit zone and has no required accessory parking for residential uses. While the existing C22 commercial overlay requires one parking space for every 300 square feet of commercial uses, the proposed C24 commercial overlay requires one parking space for every 1,000 square feet of commercial uses. The proposed zoning tax amendment to Appendix F will match MIH Options One and Two. Option One requires 25% of dwelling units to be income-restricted at an average of 60% AMI, and Option Two requires 30% of the dwelling units to be income-restricted at an average of 80% AMI. The applicant is mapping both options through this rezoning. This application is subject to the racial equity report requirement since it seeks approval for an increase in permitted residential floor area of at least 50,000 square feet. Between 2017 and 2021, the median household income in Queens Community District Two was approximately $78,000. This was greater than estimates for Queens and New York City, which is about $75,000 and $70,000, respectively. The estimated monthly rent for income-restricted units The estimated monthly rent for income-restricted units for households between sixty and a hundred percent AMI ranges from a thousand seven hundred and fifty for a studio up to three thousand four hundred for three bedrooms. The estimated average income for households earning between sixty percent and a hundred percent of the area median income ranged from sixty-five thousand dollars for one-person households up to a hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars for five-person households. The applicant is proposing thirty percent of units will be income-restricted at an average of eighty percent of the area median income, in line with MIH option two. This project is located within the Sunnyside and Woodside area, home to approximately one-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand total residents, of which thirty-nine percent identifies Asian, non-Hispanic, three percent identified as Black, non-Hispanic, twenty-eight percent identified as Hispanic or Latina of any race, and twenty-six percent identified as white, non-Hispanic. Between 2010 and 2020, the total population in this area increased twenty-one percent, significantly higher than the eight percent growth seen in Queens and New, and at the New York City level. All population groups saw increases in population during this period. In particular, Black, non-Hispanic population grew eighty-seven percent in this area during this time period. In summary, the applicant proposes a zoning map amendment from an R5 C-2-2 to an R7A C-2-4 and R5 C-2-4 zoning districts, and a zoning tax amendment to Appendix F to establish an MIH area with options one and two to facilitate the development of an approximately fifty-five-thousand five hundred square-foot building with sixty-seven total units, twenty-two of which will be income-restricted, and nine thousand two hundred square feet of commercial ground floor. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Um, just one from me. Uh, understanding the difference between the requirements for the C-2-2 and the C-2-4 in this context, um, so the, the difference here looks like it's, the part, the commercial parking space under the C-2-2 is one space for every three-hundred square feet versus, as proposed here, one for every thousand square feet. Is there any, there's no parking being proposed here, uh, but there is some amount of ground-floor commercial that's being included, ninety-two-hundred square feet?
Yeah.
So, is, so there, just remind us of the rules as to why there is no associated, um, parking requirement for the ground-floor commercial? Is it because it's under ten thousand, or what's the, what's the story?
Um, so for a C-2-4, your parking is waived if the, if the amount of commercial floor area that you're generating generates less than forty percent of, of forty required parking spaces, and this will, like, generate nine.
I see, this would require, this would generate nine spaces, because of about nine-thousand square feet, okay. So it's, that's the reason it's waived?
Yeah.
Okay.
C-2-2, it would require fifteen, so either way, this is a relatively small project that wouldn't require parking.
Understood. Okay, thank you. Let me go to Commissioner Benjamin.
Um, thank you very much for the presentation. I have three quick questions. You heard my question before about the, um, rental rates for sixty and eighty percent AMI versus the market-rate rents. Yeah, as you look at the not-income-restricted rates, the moderate income or eighty, a hundred percent of AMI is almost six hundred dollars greater than the not-income-restricted, so I'm not sure why we would include that. And, and I ask these questions because I'm hoping that at some point the department will take a look at the standards in MIH, and we can adjust them based on the reality that we've seen over the years. The second one is just something you may want to take a look at. The REAR says that there were fifty-one dwelling units all told and fifteen affordable units, whereas the rest of the project has twenty-two affordable and sixty-seven DUs, so, um, we just need to reconcile those numbers. Which one is it?
Sorry, this was, um, this is a mistake. This was actually the old numbers for the REAR. The applicant submitted a new REAR about a week ago.
Okay, thank you. Um, and the last one is where are the six commercial tenants going?
Um, so from what I understand, they're not, there's no, um, the applicant is not completely clear about what the commercial plan is. Uh, right now, it's, I believe only two of them are active. There's, like, a deli and, um, a primary care. I think those are the only two that are still functioning, but we can come back with you.
Okay, because in our package, it said all six of them were still active. If you could find out before it comes back to us, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Marine?
Thank you, Chair. Very simple question. You, the eighth and ninth floor identify a couple of terraces. Two seem to be private. The other two seem to be larger. What's, what is the planned utilization for those terraces, do you know?
No idea. I do have a floor plan, if it could be helpful to look at.
No, the floor plan's not helping, because it doesn't even show exits out to the terraces, so it doesn't show doors, so that's, that's what promulgated the question. And so if the applicant get back to us, I would appreciate that.
Of course.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, great. Thank you very much for that. We will follow up on those items, and we are now certified. Thank you, Madam Secretary.
And I forgot to mention, this was Feigula's first presentation for the Commission.
Right, I forgot to mention too. Well done, well done.
Sorry.
Congrats.
Usually I like to say that.
Okay, um, all right, number three.
Okay. The third item on our agenda is a certification of an acquisition in Brooklyn Community District Seven. Our presenter is Jukey Sai.
Good afternoon. Commissioner Goodrich is recused on this item.
Noted. Thank you.
Hello, Jukey. Hi. This is an application by the New York, New York City Department of Parks and Recreation, Parks, for an acquisition of a privately-owned parcel, Block 5267, Lot 19, for continued use as part of Prospect Farm Community Garden in Windsor Terrace, Community District Seven, Brooklyn. The project site, which makes up part of Prospect Farm Community Garden, is located in a primarily residential part of Windsor Terrace. The surrounding area is characterized by one- and two-family row homes, as well as multifamily residential apartment buildings. The site fronts on Prospect Avenue, a two-lane, two-way street with parking lanes on either side of the street. To the west is the six-lane Prospect Expressway. Its nearest entrance is eight blocks south of the project area at Church Avenue. That's out of the frame here. Prospect Park is one very long block to the east of the project site, and Greenwood Cemetery is roughly four blocks to the west. That's out of the frame here. There is a commercial strip two blocks south on Prospect Avenue. The area is well-served by public transportation. The Fort Hamilton Parkway FG Station is three blocks to the south of the project area, and the B-68, B-67, and B-69 buses serve the area as well. The project site and surrounding area is zoned R5B, which permits an FAR of one-point-five and two-point-oh for qualifying residential sites, and a maximum building height of thirty-five feet and fifty-five feet for qualifying sites. There are C-1-3 commercial overlays near the project site as well, to the north of Terrace Place and to the south of Vanderbilt Street. Prospect Farm is a well-known fifteen-year-old community garden in Windsor Terrace. Prospect Farm's gardening operations occupy the privately-owned project site, shown here in green. Operations also extend to the north, beyond the project site and on to Lot 118, shown here in blue, which is under the New York City Department of Transportation's jurisdiction, DOT. There is no fence separating the project site from Lot 118. The garden also extends beyond the eastern boundary of the project site into a portion of the one-hundred-foot right-of-way of Prospect Avenue, which is also under DOT jurisdiction, and that is shown here in red. The portion of the right-of-way occupied by the garden has not been improved as a street. New York City Parks has no plans to acquire Lot 118 or to pursue a demapping of the portion of the right-of-way used for gardening operations. The current owners of the project site acquired it in nineteen ninety-six, at the same time that they purchased the property directly to the south. At that time, the project site, Lot 118, and the portion of the right-of-way being used were then a dumping ground. There was no fence separating the three areas, and to those living in the neighborhood, it functioned as one continuous lot. The property owner and neighborhood residents undertook a multi-decade cleanup of, and conservation of the land to make it into the community garden it is today. About forty members maintain Prospect Farm's approximately fifteen garden beds, two native wildflower planting areas, and three bin compost operation. Vegetables, berries, and herbs grown at Prospect Farm are distributed among garden members. Prospect Farm also hosts a food scrap drop-off site twice a week. In addition, Prospect Farm hosts at least three, three free public events each year, including one in the spring, summer, and fall. Prospect Farm is a registered New York City Parks Green Thumb Garden. On this slide, you can see a number of photos of Prospect Farm, including of their compost bins, of some storage sites, and also of their website, which is up online if anyone wants to visit. So of note, the Green Thumb Program supports neighborhood volunteers who steward community gardens as active resources that strengthen communities. As a registered Green Thumb Garden, Prospect Farm receives free garden materials, technical assistance, educational workshops, and seasonal programs, and in return, must remain open to the public for a minimum of twenty hours each week throughout the growing season, and there are other requirements intended to support public access. Moving into some photos, this photo looks north on Prospect Avenue. The project site is behind the trees on the left-hand side of your screen. Moving up Prospect Avenue, this again looks north on Prospect Avenue. You can see Sealy Street Bridge in the middle of the screen there, and Prospect Farm and the project site on the left-hand side. I want to note that unrelated to the proposed actions, which are subject to this application, DOT is planning improvements to Sealy Street Bridge. The bridge has been identified by DOT for replacement because it's beyond its useful life and due to the presence of features that are not compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA. Replacement will likely require the construction of ADA-compliant ramps within the right-of-way and on Lot 118. Parks acknowledges that this project, the bridge repair project, may impact Prospect Farm. Again, I want to note that the bridge improvements are unrelated to the action in front of you today. Moving on, this photo looks from the north on Prospect Avenue. This is turned around. If you follow the locator map, and you could, you would be able to see the project site and garden just beyond the bridge, um, on the upper right-hand side of your screen. So the actions being requested is an acquisition of property by the city for Block 5267, Lot 19, for continued use by Prospect Farm Community Garden. As noted, the actions would, would facilitate the continued use of Block 5267, Lot 119, by Prospect Farm Community Garden. If acquired by the city, Prospect Farm would continue to be a registered garden, Green Thumb Garden, subject to these requirements. However, as a newly-city-owned property, Prospect Farm could enter into a ten-year renewable license agreement with Green Thumb, something only available to garden groups operating on city-owned properties. The license agreement will make the garden eligible to receive labor and capital improvements from Green Thumb. Depending on the availability of funding, these capital improvements could include raised beds, fencing, sheds, gazebos, and internal water supply infrastructure. Thank you. I'll take any questions.
Got it. Thank you, Jukey. Um, just one from me. Uh, so thi, this area, this entire area in question here has been operating as a community garden for some time, correct?
Correct.
And, um, the primary benefit, it sounds like, of the city's acquisition, acquisition of the private portion of this, uh, block is to enable this community garden to become a licensed Green Thumb Garden, in contrast to what it is, say, which is a registered Green Thumb Garden. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would say being able to become a licensed garden, but also, I think broadly, the understanding here is that, and this has happened with other projects in the past, uh, the commission may remember Garden of Youth Community Garden on East 182nd Street, and that came back, I think, from the commission in spring of 2024. I, I believe Parks Department, and they can speak more to this at the public hearing, will also acquire properties for gardens that they want to keep as gardens in perpetuity. So in addition to the ability to access those, um, licensed Green Thumb Garden benefits, it's the idea that this is a privately-owned site, and if it's acquired by the city, it can be permanently a community garden.
Thank you. Commissioner Sorolo? So, is there a concern, I, I understand the benefits of it makes perfect sense, but when we say that this action facilitates the continued use of this parcel as a community garden, are we saying that because there's a concern that it may not continue to be used as a community garden? I mean, obviously, it's privately-owned, and I know it's in a program that requires this use, but that's not necessarily a program that's in perpetuity and runs with the land? So what, what is the under, aside from the benefits that will come with the investment that City Parks can make in this differently than it might be able to make them now, what's driving this? Or is that the primary reason? Because I'm assuming this also facilitates the ability for the city to negotiate the acquisition with the private owner.
Yes. So, that's correct. Uh, the acquisition action facilitates the negotiation with the property owner. I believe there's, um, some understanding of the current property owner, um, you know, whether in the potentially distant future, whether it's him or Ayers or, or, um, or, or whatever, could, potent, you know, there's potential it could be sold or used for something else, uh, but I'll let Parks Department speak a little bit more to that.
That's fine. This, the second question, and I know it, as you indicated, and clearly it's not, the subject of this application, the DOT work, um, you did mention that there would be potentially an impact on Lot 118. What, what, what is that? Is that a temp, temporary impact, or is that a long-term impact? And, and how will the, the lines of these parcels be identified, if at all, at some point in the future, if the city ends up, the city ends up owning all of these, even if different agencies have jurisdiction over them?
So, as far as the actual line and lot work, I, I'm, I don't have any survey data on it right now. I assume something needs to be done on, to that effect, if it hasn't been done already. As far as the potential projects on this lot, and it's described in the LR3 or in the project description for this, DOT is, has sort of thinking about building an ADA-accessible ramp that would be on Lot 118 and part of the DOT-owned right-of-way. The projected work is intended to occupy DOT property only, and it, if it is built there, it would be a ramp that could, um, it would be in that footprint. And there are notably, you know, a lot of the garden operations specifically in the DOT-owned right-of-way, um, concerns around this have been raised. Um, it is something that the Department of Transportation is definitely aware of, um, but the sort of beginnings of the process on this have, it's not started yet, the outreach around this, uh, specific ADA improvement. Um, but yeah, that, the concern has been noted by the Department of Transportation.
I understand, and I, I appreciate that explanation. I think, and obviously, the importance of creating an ADA-accessible ramp here is critically important, but you could see the comp, I mean, obvious what the conflict may be for the community garden and this structure, so it'll be interesting to see or get with the agencies, when the agencies are before us, to have an understanding of how they're going to work out those conflicts and, and not, and design something that is, as best as possible, works with the sort of open space that's there.
And if I may, I just, I want to say, and I'm sure there are gardeners watching this presentation, uh, the city is very aware of this garden being a beloved community institution.
Good.
It is really important to a lot of people. I've been by it. I know people who garden there. Uh, it is an important place, and I also want to know- It is an important place, and I also want to note the city's obligation to make our structures, make our improvements, and especially to follow the Americans with Disabilities Act. So these things are in tension, and we want to make sure that we move forward with something that ideally meets the needs of everyone, but I will leave it to DOT for how that takes place. But I just wanted to note that.
I appreciate that, too. One final quick question, if you know, since currently this entire parcel is operating almost visually as a garden, and the uses that relate to the garden, when you clean up these boundaries, what is the size of the parcel, the privately owned parcel, which will now be, I'm assuming, if DOT is invading their own space or using their own space more openly, what becomes the size of the parcel that's privately owned and will be in function as the garden?
So I don't have, yeah, fine, that's a, noted. Thank you, Commissioner Cerulo.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gold?
Thanks. Excuse me. Out of curiosity, I guess what's not really clear, is Parks actually paying for this or are they just taking possession of it?
The city would be paying for this, yes.
Paying, and so, you know, I guess it's difficult without having sort of a background to understand, but we're basically, Parks is stepping in to pay for it. Can we say if we know, is it significant compensation? Because it doesn't, it seems to me like the benefit that's there to the gardeners, if you will, of getting under, you know, a pure Green Thumb versus a registered Green Thumb, it's being used for the same purpose, right? So I guess, you know, can we understand that a little bit better? Or do we not know?
So I believe the, and DCAST handles negotiations. I believe in general, the city pays fair market value for properties, and that's based off of DOT, or sorry, DOF assessments. As far as how Parks weighs the value of acquisition versus, you know, the continued use on its own, I will leave that to Parks Department to answer. But yes, and I believe, yeah, I don't have, yeah, much more information about that. It's a good question. I appreciate it.
But I guess, let's put that aside. I guess, and it's not for you, it's certainly, you know, a question really for Parks. I guess sort of trying to understand a little better is the way it's presented, when we think about it effectively, it's being used as a garden. It seems like it'll continue to be used as a garden, on the one hand. On the other hand, you know, the city, or Parks has the opportunity to get involved there perhaps, and you know, who knows? I mean, could muck it up, if you will. So, you know, at the end of the day, it just, it doesn't, from here, and maybe I'm not understanding fully, it doesn't seem like there's that much benefit to Parks getting involved here, but I'd love to understand that a little better, from the Parks team, if that's possible.
Noted. Thank you, Commissioner Gold. Thanks, Commissioner. I suppose the counter to that might be that it's private property, so it could cease being a park in that direction, too.
Correct.
But okay, let's move on to Commissioner Osorio and Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the presentation, and thanks so much for acknowledging the previous questions. I want to build on that by saying that, in my mind, thank you also for the documentation, because it's really clear, you know, why this is a good idea and why, you know, this fits all of the criteria to expand, kind of like, you know, the opportunities here for gardening specifically. I wanted to build a little bit on the relationship with Lots 118 and also Lot 18, which we haven't talked about yet.
The one to the...
Yeah, the vacant lot there. So I'm wondering if, and then please correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like the Lot 118 is already informally being used by the garden. How can you say more, a little bit about that? And because the spirit of the question is really, this sounds like an opportunity for Parks to take possession of both, the property that it will be acquiring, the private property that it will be acquiring, and taking possession over additional city-owned land that could potentially benefit the park. I mean, building on Commissioner Cerulo's questions, though, I wonder whether we could achieve an outcome through, you know, high-quality landscape design, et cetera, that can meet the ADA needs, you know, presented by DOT, while at the same time, sort of like, you know, catering the needs of the garden? That's one scenario. And then the other question, the question about Lot 18 is, I'm wondering if you can say more about it, just because it also sounds like an opportunity to bring into the conversation, although this is another privately owned lot. The reason why I bring it up is because either it could expand the garden furthermore, and two, it could, given the fact that it has access on both streets, it could actually solve the ADA problem that we're talking about. So I just wanted to throw that out there and see if there's anything that you know that we can potentially build on today, or whether this is something that we can discuss. I did want to say, though, in response to Commissioner Gold, which I think it's a valid question, that more and more we've seen rezonings that unintentionally reduce the amount of open space as a matter of, you know, just trying to maximize potential residential density. And so I think that every opportunity that we can have to maximize and permanently protect open spaces like this one are worth pursuing.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benjamin?
Thanks.
I can respond, just really quickly. So Commissioner, sorry, I wanted to say...
Next, Commissioner Benjamin's next. Let's give you a chance.
Sorry, Commissioner Benjamin. What I want to say is, I will leave the discussion of what can be done on Lot 118 to Parks and DOT. As far as the use on Lot 118, I do, I was actually there yesterday. I'll show you a photo on my phone, but it's not being used really as like, there's no beds in there. I saw just kind of some storage, just a few like odds and ends items, but there's no clear kind of delineation between the parcel that is really being used as the garden and especially the right-of-way and that portion of Lot 118. Sorry, Commissioner Benjamin.
Okay.
That was on me. Commissioner Benjamin, you're up.
Two questions. One, I'm struggling with the effects of the city acquiring this lot. And the first is, right now, if somebody falls in the garden and breaks their neck, the garden is responsible. If the city takes over this lot, and that same person falls and breaks their neck a second time, I assume the city, in the end, is responsible. Is that a correct assessment of what will happen when this changes hands?
I'm not sure about the liability. I would have to defer to Parks and DOT and council on that. What I will say is, you know, there are portions of this garden that are still currently city-owned property. So like, there's significant activity that is already on that portion, that DOT right-of-way in the red there.
Okay. Well, if you could find out for when this comes back, what's the insurance requirements are?
Right.
For Green Thumb, both licensed and registered? Because I'd like to make sure that, to the extent possible, the city is not taking on a potential liability that we weren't aware of. And the second, following up on Commissioner Gold's question, is it looks like, right now, Lot 19 is not a buildable lot. Is that correct? It doesn't have any access to the street?
I will hold off on that until, I don't have like a strong, I want to make sure I give you the right answer when I answer that.
Okay. If you could get the answer, because it should certainly lower the price. The only way I see that Lot 19 becomes a buildable lot is if either the city combines it, so are we, in fact, making a buildable lot out of one that is not currently buildable? And secondly, if combined with Lot 18, is that with its access to the street, is that a buildable lot? And could FAR be transferred to build Commissioner Osorio's housing? I mean, Green Thumb Gardens have floor area, and Parks don't. So could it be transferred? Could there be this unintended potential consequence? Okay, that's it for me.
And yeah, I'll have to get back to Commissioner Benjamin, but it noted your concern about the use of city resources, and I do appreciate the line of questioning here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to go back to Commissioner Cerulo for a follow-up, and then we're going to certify this item and move on.
In this line of questioning, I recall an application not long ago, and I don't remember the name of the application, but it involved an acquisition by the Parks Department for a lot. The question came up then, and this goes to, because Parks was acquiring the lot, that it couldn't, that only Parks could acquire that lot, and they couldn't then dispose of that lot. And again, this goes to the, is this, does the state end up, if this becomes a City Parks Department parcel, is the disposition of it at any point in time by Parks something the state needs to be involved in? Is it getting that designation, or can the Parks Department do what Commissioner Benjamin was asking, and that is to link the lot or combine the lots in some way with DOT's lot, or purchase the lot to the west and create a buildable lot? So while we're acting on an acquisition authorization for Parks to take it, that at some point in time, Parks can decide, or the city can decide on behalf of its agencies, it wants to do something else with the lot. And this came up not long ago.
Carmen Veleguas.
Was it?
Carmen Veleguas.
Okay. I remember this question coming up, but I don't remember if we had an answer at that time either.
So I don't have a perfect answer for you right now, Commissioner Cerulo. What I will say, I believe this is not a site-selection acquisition because the current use is like the same use it's going to be.
Okay.
And I believe, and I will follow up to make sure this is correct, that if there was a change of use, it would likely come back before the commission for a site-selection action. So when you say, could this happen, like, in theory, many things could happen with the approval of the commission and going through ULEP, but I believe its current use is, like, there was no change in required use. But I was, is that correct, or no?
Yeah, I hear you. I was just looking at this perhaps differently because it's the Parks Department. If it was another agency, I could see all the possibilities, but because it's Parks, does that create a different status that makes it more difficult, if not impossible, without some subsequent action?
Okay.
For them to rid themselves of what we're authorizing them to acquire?
But anyway, that's just a whole...
Okay, yeah, I mean, yeah, thanks, Commissioner. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, this item's certified. Thank you, Jukey.
Thank you.
We will move on to the next.
Okay. The fourth item on our agenda is a referral of a non-ULEP zoning tax amendment in Brooklyn Community District Eight. Our presenter is Jonah Roga.
Hello, Jonah.
Hello. Hi, hi, Chair, Commissioners, a long time, messy.
All right.
We missed you.
Thank you, yeah, missed you. So this is, good afternoon again. So this is an application by the department for a follow-up action to the Atlantic Avenue Mixed Use Plan, or AIMUP. In summary, the department's proposing a standalone zoning tax amendment to the Special Atlantic Avenue Mixed Use District, currently in area zoned M1-2A or M12A/R6A. A 1.1 FAR incentive for FAR encourages the creation of non-residential space in mixed-use developments. The proposed tax amendment would limit a portion of this incentive to apply only to light industrial and select community facility and commercial uses, and this is in direct response to a priority and commitment made by the department to the City Council and Community Board. So the project area is characterized by a mix of residential, commercial, and light industrial uses, as well as open parking and vacant land. As shown in the photos on the right, non-residential uses generally consist of one- and two-story warehouse-style buildings, used for storage, distribution, and building supplies, while the Greenpoint Manufacturing Design Center, GMDC, owns and operates a facility with subsidized manufacturing space for small businesses, which you can see very, a little bit on the bottom right photo. Just as a brief refresher, AIMUP is a neighborhood plan that was recently approved by the City Council at the end of May to support housing and job growth, especially affordable housing, while improving streets, parks, and other infrastructure. In total, AIMUP is projected to create 4,600 new homes, including 1,900 affordable homes, and around 2,800 jobs or 800,000 square feet of new space for jobs, which will be accompanied by approximately $235 million in capital and programmatic investments, which the department is thrilled to share as an update from our recent work with City Council and City Hall. And these improvements include, would consist of, commitments related to parks and streets, as well as funding for workforce development, training, and legal services for tenants. For background, AIMUP included three types of land use actions. First, zoning map change to allow housing and a mix of uses. Second, the zoning tax change to apply MAH and establish a special district. And then third, site-specific actions for 100% affordable housing on city-owned lots, as highlighted in yellow. As part of the approved zoning map changes, the mid-blocks were mapped with a pairing of M12A and R6A, which we refer to as the mid-block mixed-use area, shown in a dashed blue line, and which roughly covers a seven-block area south of Atlantic Avenue between Grand and Franklin Avenues. In this geography, the zoning allows up to 3.9 FAR for residential and 3 FAR for commercial community facility and light industrial uses. And then in an effort to encourage mixed-use buildings and space for jobs, the special district allows a 1.1 FAR incentive for all types of non-residential uses in mixed-use buildings, effectively allowing up to 5 FAR. And the graphic on the bottom is just meant to help visualize each of these scenarios. The proposed zoning tax amendment would adjust the incentive for non-residential uses such that 0.5 of the 1.1 total FAR would be limited to only light industrial and select community facility and commercial uses. Due to the physical challenges of accommodating multiple uses on the ground floor of smaller sites, we propose that sites less than 10,000 square feet be exempt. And then to summarize the specific uses being incentivized, community facilities would include libraries, museums, community centers, non-commercial art galleries, and nonprofit spaces. The commercial and industrial uses include a reference set of uses created as part of the city of the Ask for Economic Opportunity Tax Amendment, which covers repair, maintenance, art-based, and the full range of light industrial uses. And overall, these uses would mirror the Gowanus mix from the Gowanus Special District. A racial equity report was required for this application, which reflects the findings from the report for AIMUP. The proposal is located in the Crown Heights North NTA, which has a displacement risk level of intermediate due in part to the high-risk housing conditions and high level of market pressure. The median household income for the area is $72,300 per year, slightly higher than both Brooklyn and the city as a whole. And like, both Brooklyn and the larger city, the median gross rent has increased in the last 10 to 15 years. The most notable demographic trend in the last couple decades has been the increase in the percentage of the population that is white and Asian, as we've definitely expressed for, along with a 30% decrease in the black population. With respect to employment, the Crown Heights North NTA contains a higher percentage of workers in the office sector and a lower percentage of workers in the industrial sector compared to Brooklyn and the city as a whole. And that concludes my presentation, and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Jonah. Let's see if there are any questions for you. Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation, and thanks so much for creating an opportunity to discuss this. of interest that I hadn't expressed when we first saw AIMUP 1.0. So, I just have a quick question. So, can you share a little bit, sort of, and I understand why land use group six is sort of like the focus here. I can see showrooms that perhaps we have maintenance operations in the back, sort of like, covered there, but I'm wondering, like, for example, for heat pumps and things like that, which is sort of like, I think, what resonates in my mind with some of the comments from the Community Board in terms of turning this into a green hub of sorts, certainly to produce green jobs. But I'm wondering if other construction materials, porous pavements, maybe uses that may require a little bit more of a higher industrial could potentially be included as well, and so I'm wondering if you can walk us a little bit through the rationale for specifically land use group, and maybe, and if there is opportunity to expand it a little bit. Again, with the understanding that this is not, the idea here is to identify the uses, the industrial uses that make sense.
So, just a quick clarification. So all those green job, those industrial uses are included here, so it includes all of use group 10, and that actually represents the vast majority of the uses that are, that qualify. The one exception is, not in that use group, but auto-related uses would not be part of this incentive. So I think that's part of a, and that's also consistent with, they wrote the approach we took in Gowanus, so that way we're incentivizing uses that kind of mean more of the green jobs and prevent kind of like auto repair. Not that we're against that, but it wouldn't, that particular set of uses wouldn't be part of the, that incentive FAR.
Thank you. So, can you share a little bit more about why? Like, what is, now specifically talking about auto repair, it sounds like, you know, you've created now an opportunity to reopen that conversation, and so I'm wondering if, where are the boundaries of that? In other words, it sounds like this is an opportunity to strike a balance, and so, you know?
I would say, broadly speaking, we have a good template in Gowanus, and so we're, I think we're trying not to kind of open the door too much to further refining the uses. And in some cases, the, in some ways, Gowanus, it's still a little untested too, so we're trying to see how it works, but we think that that served as a good model for what we want to apply here. The reason why the auto uses weren't part of this .5 incentive and weren't included in Gowanus as well is because, kind of, the similar goals are on a walkable, you know, transit-oriented, pedestrian-friendly environment. You know, both, and in particular in AIMUP, you know, there's gonna be a substantial investment in redesigning Atlantic Avenue, other investments on the side street, so we're, you know, we're okay with those uses located here, but we just didn't, it didn't feel appropriate to include in that .5 FAR. Does that make sense?
That makes sense, thank you. This is useful, and look forward to continuing the conversation as this moves forward. Thanks.
Great. Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Okay, we will refer this one out to the Community Board and the Borough President for 60 days. Thank you, Jonah, as always.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay. Madam Secretary.
The fifth item on our agenda is a referral of a non-ULP zoning authorization in Brooklyn Community District Eight. Our presenter is Kira Guavas.
Hello, Kira, welcome.
Hello, good afternoon, everybody. Kazun Tait, bless you. All right, good afternoon, Commissioners and Chair Karadnik. Today I will be presenting a fresh authorization that is here for referral at 870-888-Atlantic Avenue. This is a private application by 888 Atlantic Property Owner LP to build a 19-story residential building totaling approximately 187,000 square feet, including approximately 7,900 square feet for a fresh food store. The applicant is requesting a fresh zoning certification to increase the maximum building height by up to 15 feet or one story. There is a separate but related ministerial action for a fresh food store certification. This project is located within Community District Eight and within Councilmember Crystal Hudson's district. The proposed development is located near the intersection of Prospect Heights, Crown Heights, and Clinton Hill, and a few blocks east of the Pacific Park in downtown Brooklyn. The development site is approximate to Lowry Triangle, Underhill Plaza, and new open spaces at Pacific Park. The site is located along Atlantic Avenue, a 120-foot-wide street mid-block between a 100-foot-wide Vanderbilt Avenue to the west, and the approximately 150-foot-wide intersection of Underhill and Washington Avenue to the east. The block is made up of a mix of residential, commercial, industrial, and self-storage uses, ranging in height from two to seven stories. The surrounding blocks are generally row houses and apartment buildings ranging in height from three to 29 stories, with active commercial corridors located along Vanderbilt and Washington Avenue, as well as the Fulton Street Transit Corridor served by the Clinton-Washington C. Train Station one block to the north. The regional Atlantic Terminal Transit Hub is located three long blocks to the west and serviced by several train lines, including the 2, 3, 4, 5, B, Q, R, N, and D lines, and the terminus of the Long Island Railroad. The Empire State Development's Pacific Park multi-block development is located one block to the west. The project area is located within the AIMUP study area, which was recently adopted by the City Council on May 28th. The development site is within a newly-mapped C6-3A zoning district, which allows a 9.02 FAR for residential, a 6.0 FAR for commercial, or a 7.5 FAR for community facility uses, with a maximum height of up to 185 feet or 18 stories. No accessory off-street parking is required. Prior to the AIMUP plan approval, this parcel was rezoned through a private application in 2021 from an M1-1 zoning district to a C6-3A district. Here's a view looking east along Atlantic Avenue, which shows a nine-story mixed-use building at 540 Waverly Place on the left-hand side, and the development site on the right-hand side highlighted in magenta. Here's a view looking west along Atlantic Avenue, which shows a cube smart storage space on the left-hand side that is directly above the development site, and the three, six-story 596 Washington Avenue mixed-use building on the right-hand side. Here is a view of the development site looking east at Atlantic Avenue. As I stated before, this authorization will facilitate a 19-story mixed-use building, pardon, with a total of approximately 187,000 square feet of floor area, approximately 100,700,000 square feet of residential floor area, resulting in 258 dwelling units, 48 of which are income-restricted. Approximately 7,900 square feet of floor area would be reallocated from the fresh use. You'll notice that the building appears to be topped out at 19 stories in the previous photos and in this rendering. The applicant submitted a post-approval amendment to the Department of Buildings on April 10th for the additional story. On June 10th, the Department of Buildings issued a stop-work order pending the approval of the fresh authorization. The applicant requests a fresh authorization pursuant to zoning resolution 6322 to add 15 feet, or one floor, which you see in yellow, increasing the maximum allowable height from 185 feet or 18 stories to 200 feet or 19 stories. In order to grant the authorization, the commission shall find that the modification is necessary to accommodate the fresh store, that it won't adversely affect adjacent area, and that it won't obstruct access to light and air. In conclusion, the applicant is requesting an authorization to allow an increase of the maximum building height by up to 15 feet to facilitate the development of a 19-story residential building with 258 dwelling units and a ground-floor fresh use at 870-888-Atlantic Avenue. Thank you, and I'm happy to take questions.
Thanks, Kira. So, just so we're all clear on what happened here. They built the 19th floor.
Yes, that's correct. So they did build the 19th story. I do want to bring you back to a talking point that I had earlier. So they applied for a post-approval amendment for 19 stories to the Department of Buildings on April 10th. One could, you know, assume that they had made an assumption that we, you know, can't speak for them, that you have to continue asking the applicant about it during pre-hearing, post-hearing, sorry. But for a 19th, so basically, the fact is, yes, they built it, and the Department of Buildings conducted a site inspection in early June, and that's when they determined this is necessary to bring in a stop-work order pending the approval of the fresh authorization. So the building envelope is built out, but on June 10th, the Department of Buildings said, no more work, you can't fill in some of the 19th floor. So the dwelling units can't be built on the 19th floor. So essentially, it, the work pending is dependent on the approval of the fresh authorization.
Okay, so they built it, the Department of Buildings said, stop, you can't continue to, you can't proceed on the 19th floor because you don't have permission to the 19th floor. You can seek your fresh authorization. If you get it, then you can occupy it, but otherwise, you cannot. Is that more or less the right understanding?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, is there anything about the commission's evaluation of an application like this in terms of the findings, or the rules, or the limitations for a site that's already built, as opposed to one that is not? So, should we be evaluating this the same way that we would have if they had come to us on day one? Or is there any, is there any standard rule, limitation, obligation, anything that should further instruct the commission, or are we looking at this like it's a fresh application? I'm sorry, when I say a fresh application? A new application for a fresh store? So help me understand that. It may be that we're looking at it like a new application, but do tell me if there's any other standards to be considered here.
Sure. So our understanding is to take a look at the authorization and have the overbuilt condition as a separate issue, but if we imagine the 19 stories, right, if we look at this image, do we notice, or can the commission say, would it adversely affect the adjacent area, or would it obstruct access to light and air? So regardless of this being overbuilt, the condition...
Right, so we're talking about that one story?
Yes, the one story.
Which is what we would have looked at from the beginning. So what you're saying is, no, there's no other finding here, that if a building, for whatever reason, does things in the reverse order, that we should, that we have an obligation or even to do one thing or another? We're looking at the findings that are defined under the rules here. Is that, is that right?
That's correct. That's within city planning.
Let me go to Commissioner Marine.
Thank you, Chair. So, from the beginning, was this filed at the Buildings Department as an 18-story building or a 19-story building? And when it was filed, was it filed with a fresh view, knowing that a fresh, a supermark was gonna be at the base?
So initially, when this was filed, it was filed for a 17-story building, but then the applicant had waited for City of Yes for Housing Opportunity and AIMUP to file for the 19 stories. When they filed for the 19 stories, that was around April 10th. So, you know, kind of waiting for both the approval of AIMUP and the City of Yes for Housing Opportunity with the fresh. So, they, yeah, waited after.
Understood. So, the Buildings Department application is a 17, the PAA was, go ahead.
Oh, so the, on April 10th, that post-approval was for 19 stories.
That is correct.
Yes.
So the original application, I go back, is 17.
Mm-hmm.
They're waiting for AIMUP and City of Yes to be approved?
Mm-hmm.
To allow for two more stories?
Mm-hmm.
They go ahead and build them without approval, and before AIMUP? No, AIMUP was already approved, City of Yes had not, is that correct?
City of Yes was approved, opposite.
So City of Yes was approved, AIMUP not?
Yes.
Got it.
City Council approved AIMUP in late May.
In late May.
Mm-hmm.
And the...
I also want a caveat, in case we missed this earlier on, there was a private application for this particular parcel in 2021 that mimics part of the AIMUP rezoning. So this original parcel was an M1-1, right? But in 2021, City Planning Commission approved this rezoning to a C6-3A. So at that point, it was approved to have 17 stories. So it was, it would have been as of right, but the extra...
I'm following all that. What's very annoying and very egregious is that this is not the first time that we've seen an application where, or, yes, an application to correct something that a developer has done that has not been approved, and it's very disturbing.
We're with you on that.
And to say that this one story is not an egregious condition, it's not creating more shadows, that's all irrelevant. The fact of the matter is that the proper channels were not followed, and the proper protocols were not followed, and that's disturbing for the City of New York.
I hear you on that.
Commissioner Ramperchad.
Thank you. I had similar questions, because I was looking at the stop-work order in the DOB system, and I was curious, it said 17-story. Question, with this fresh food at the ground-floor level, is there a long-term lease? Do we know any details on it in terms of, you know, in terms of...
So as part of the fresh certification process, there is a letter of intent for a tenant to come in to tenant this space for a lease. At this point, I can get back to you about the status of the lease and the tenant.
And just confirming the square footage they're occupying, the fresh food?
So with the fresh, the way that the bonus works is there's reallocated square footage for the fresh that gets reallocated for residential floor area. So that basically is a 19-story in this case. So we're, because the applicant is waiting for the fresh authorization, they can't tenant the fresh store, and without tenenting the fresh store, their already 19-built story can't be occupied with the extra height waiver as part of this authorization.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes, first Commissioner Ramperchad, it's 7.9 thousand square feet that's being reallocated, and the fresh text requires 6,000 square feet. And we've seen a lot of just over 6,000 fresh stores, but I agree with you that the, it's clear the developer did not start building this 19-story building in April when they filed. They've been building this building for a while, with the assumption that City of Yes would pass, that, and that would give them 18, and that eventually they'd find a way to 19. Whether we want to reward them, how we slap them on the hand, I mean, if we didn't give them the certification, what would they do?
So...
Go ahead, Kira.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say they can't occupy the 19th floor. So the...
They can't occupy it, or they would have to take it down?
My understanding is that they can't occupy it. They can't continue the construction on the 19th floor.
Could they go to BSA?
That is a good question.
Hi, this is Stephen Leonard, Director of Technical Review. We'll check with DOB, it would be up to DOB as to how to remedy the situation, and we'll check with them about whether the 19th floor would need to be actually removed from the building, or whether it would just be...
So the stop-work order didn't specify that they could go to B, usually, not usually, sometimes, the Department of Building gives you a number of ways that you can handle the violation that they've given you. And sometimes they say, you know, you can go to City Planning and get a special permit, or you can go to BSA and try for a hardship. So I was just, what is... Um, so, I was just, what is the impact if we decide that it's not a certification we wish to approve?
Yeah. Well, well, it, it, it's very clear that a, um, and, and I, this is not a valid way of moving forward, but if an applicant does do some work that requires, uh, a city planning approval, before it gets that approval, it is their risk, and they have to do whatever is required of them to become compliant, should they not get that.
Right. But the only one, I really recall where we've, where the city made someone take it down was on Ninety-Sixth Street, where they built ten extra stories. But it was a mistake. Um, and there we did make them, after eight years of court cases, they eventually first tried to turn it into affordable housing, and then they actually took down the structure. But I'd be curious.
Okay. Well, we'll look into what the, what the...
Yeah. Yeah, Susan. And I just, um, I just want to sort of focus on when we have the application in front of us. I mean, there's a stop-work order, there's a, you know, obviously, they can't proceed, and they can't occupy at least part of the building at, at the moment. When we have an application in front of us for something, we have to, though, make sure that we're assessing it based on the requirements and zoning and, and focus less on, like, the nature of the actor and, and more on whether we think that what is being applied for both works satisfies the requirements of zoning and, you know, is appropriate land use. Um, and I, and I totally, the idea that somebody's building something without an approval and then coming back and saying, "Well, okay, I'll get it," you know, um, if I get caught or whatever the, whatever the, the, you know, the, and I don't know anything about this applicant, so I don't know if that's what happened or something else completely. But, um, I just want to, the, you know, remind them to, us that we need to focus on, um, the, the actual criteria for the applicant, for the approval that they've, that they've applied for. There is, I mean, they have a staff work order, they're clearly, that's not beneficial to anyone. There is a certain degree of, um, uh, consequences, um, to them for having proceeded without the approval, and, and those are the consequences that really that, um, should, they should have and that DOB is, um, you know, imposes. But if they have a, a right and if they have, if they meet the criteria in zoning, we should look at that, um, and, and sort of make the decision on the, on a land use application. What happens, Susan, if that letter of intent, which seems like it's pretty vague, does not result in a tenant for that space? If we were to approve this, there is no tenant, what happens to the nineteenth floor? I, I think when we are making a determination about a fresh application and, you know, space on, of extra space, we can look at the criteria in zoning and say, you know, what do they need to do? I know we are looking at our fresh requirements now, but, um, and we can certainly push the applicant, the applicant on, you know, what does this mean? Is there an actual tenant? And, um, you're going to commit, like, if it's not, if there's nobody there, that if you don't have the tenant, you're not going to occupy the space? I mean, I think there's a lot we can push the applicant on, but we should just really focus on whether he is, he, the applicant is meeting the zoning criteria. Right. Although you would agree, I think, that the two are related, that the more vague the agreement, the harder it is to come to a conclusion about whether they're meeting the criteria, because, you know, the criteria involves a certain amount of floor space for fresh product, a certain amount of floor space for all of these different things, and we don't really know that. Right. And, 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 and I absolutely agree that we should be looking at what the zoning requires and then, and then pushing the applicant if we think the applicant hasn't met what zoning requires or hasn't been specific enough or precise enough, and, 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 and that is, you know, the applicant, I'm assuming, will be in front of you, and, um, you know, absolutely. Thank you.
Sure. Thanks, Commissioner, Commissioner Dweck.
Right, Susan, before you, before you rescind your retirement letter. So, I'm trying to look at this objectively and say, "How do we make lemonade out of lemons?" And, uh, obviously, we need the housing in New York City, but again, we don't want to promote, we don't want to promote bad actors in, in this kind of behavior. Is there a way to restrict a higher portion of the residential FAR that is created through the fresh authorization for affordable housing? Where we have, under MIH, twenty-five percent, perhaps, you say, "Well, you're a penalty," or this would be considered if it was fifty percent of the additional floor space so that...
Yeah, we, we, we can't, um, in, in looking at the, the conditions or the, the criteria for granting an approval here, add more additional conditions that...
Can the developer offer it?
Developer can offer anything, the developer...
And can, and can we...
But we cannot require it because, you know, zoning says you can, obviously, that, you know, MIH is a certain percentage, there's various options, and that's what we're limited to in terms of what we can, uh, we, we can require of people. Certainly, developers can offer more.
I'm sure they're listening.
Holding them to it is more difficult.
Correct. So, if they were to offer that, we would have no ability to hold them to it, but I'm assuming they are players that would want to continue doing business in the City of New York in the future and come in front of us. We have a long memory, and, uh...
Right. And one expects when applicants come in, in front of you and make statements that they are accurate and that they intend to follow through them, and, um, and those are, you know, all important things.
Okay. Well, I hope they're listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Well, we're going to refer this one out to the community board for forty-five days, and we'll have it back. Um, thank you, Kyra.
Hey, thank you.
Appreciate it. Let's move on to the next item.
The sixth item on our agenda is a post-referral of a non-yewer modification to a previously approved special permit and a SNAP authorization in Staten Island Community District Three. Our presenter is Andrew Jones.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
All right. I am here to present an application to upgrade the Mayflower Avenue Pumping Station, which is a sanitary sewage complex located in the Arden Heights neighborhood of Staten Island Community District Three, serves an approximately eighteen-hundred-acre drainage area. This is a public application submitted by the New York City Department of Environmental Protection requesting two land use actions. A non-yewer modification of an existing zoning special permit pursuant to ZR Section seven four seven three four, which enables the commission to permit the construction of a municipal sewage pumping station in a residence district and to prescribe any additional conditions or safeguards to minimize the effects on the character of the surrounding area, such as fences, landscaping, and other screening devices. Second action is a Special South Richmond Development District, or SRD, authorization pursuant to ZR Section one oh seven six five for the modification of natural features. These actions would facilitate the construction of a new service building, a new force main, the rehabilitation of the existing pump building, including the installation of a new HVAC system, a new electrical system, and new stormwater management system, the replacement of other site improvements, including the driveway and perimeter fence in place, and the construction of an interim pumping station that would maintain sewer service while these upgrades, which seek to enhance the longevity of the facility, uh, are being made. The station was constructed following a series of nineteen eighty-six CPC approvals, the first of which was for the original zoning special permit pursuant to ZR Section seven four seven three four, a pair of SRD authorizations pursuant to ZR Sections one oh seven six four and one oh seven six five, which allowed the applicant to remove ten trees and to modify existing topography by more than two feet. And then lastly, a zoning certification pursuant to ZR Section one oh seven oh eight to facilitate the future subdivision of the parcel that would contain the station into two new zoning lots. However, it should be noted that this subdivision was never completed. The CPC also approved a concurrent application that involved a site selection action. These applications jointly facilitated the construction of the existing pumping station complex, which you can see depicted in the site plan on the right-hand side of the screen. The station currently consists of an approximately thirty-one-hundred-square-foot, uh, thirty-foot-tall pump building, an underground fuel storage tank, a stormwater management system that discharges into an onsite drainage ditch, and Slate Creek, which is a small water course that runs through the southwest corner of the site, and approximately fifteen thousand square feet of paved areas, including a driveway and a small parking lot. The pumping station is located in a two, a two-acre site at the southernmost portion of nineteen fifty-one Arthur Kill Road, which is block six one six nine, lot thirty-seven. Lot thirty-seven is an approximately seventeen-point-six-acre zoning lot that is owned by the Department of Sanitation. DEP occupies and has jurisdiction over, uh, a two-acre, fully fenced-in portion of lot thirty-seven, which is outlined in red, um, on the slide here. This area is coterminous with what the CPC approved to be subdivided as part of the original application back in nineteen eighty-six. DEP has, has informed us that they, uh, intend to complete the prior CPC-approved subdivision with the Department of Buildings following the CPC's approval of the present application. The site is in an R-three-two district within the SRD at the intersection of Arthur Kill Road, which is a major south shore arterial, and East Service Road provides direct access onto the West Shore Expressway, which you can see there as well. The area to the east consists predominantly of low-density residential and open space and recreation uses, including Arden Heights Woods Park. Um, and the area to the west consists of the West Mound of Fresh Kills Park, as well as some commercial and light industrial uses along Arthur Kill Road. The pumping station is accessed by two gated curb cuts, uh, one on the site's East Service Road frontage and the other on the site's Arthur Kill Road frontage, and the site has a hundred and eighty-three trees of six-inch or greater caliper, representing four hundred and fifty-one tree credits. Presently, the applicant is proposing to rehabilitate the existing pump building by installing flood resiliency measures and upgrading the electrical and HVAC systems to replace the site's fencing and paved areas, as well as a fuel storage tank and external stormwater management infrastructure in place, and to construct a new one-story, fifteen-foot-tall, um, thirteen-hundred-square-foot service building immediately north of the existing pump building. To construct a new force main that is approximately twenty-four inches in diameter and would run approximately seventeen-hundred linear feet from the pump building, um, to a discharge maintenance hole, uh, in the bed of Arthur Kill Road. And then lastly, they would construct a thirteen-hundred-square-foot below-grade interim pumping station, or IPS, in the western portion of the site, um, that would be used, again, to maintain sewer service, uh, during construction, and that could potentially be used during emergencies to sustain sewer service as well, and that is outlined in the dashed lines a little faint here. Um, as part of the proposed work, all critical foot, uh, excuse me, all critical equipment would be raised above the designed flood elevation to mitigate the risk of damage during a major flood event. To facilitate these improvements, the applicant seeks to remove fifty-nine trees worth a hundred and thirty-four tree credits and to modify topography by approximately nine hundred and twenty cubic yards of both cut and fill respectively. While most of the proposed tree removal, um, and grading work is consistent with the ZR's provisions for natural features on plan review sites, which are sites that are over an acre in size, uh, within the South Richmond District, some of the proposed modifications would occur, um, beyond twenty feet of existing buildings' footprints or within twenty feet of rear or side lot lines, um, which triggers the need for, um, the authorization that they're seeking. So, as a result, uh, the applicant is requesting both a non-yewer modification to a previously approved special permit, uh, pursuant to ZR seven four seven three four, and an SRD authorization pursuant to CR, uh, one oh seven six five for the modification of natural features. The applicant has stated that while the proposed changes require some alterations to, uh, elements of the prior special permit approval, they are consistent with the underlying zoning. The applicant also states that the proposal continues to meet the findings made by the CPC in granting the original approval, um, specifically noting that the pumping station is nearing the end of its expected service life, that these upgrades are essential to, uh, ensuring its future operational reliability, and that the pumping station's sustainability and resiliency would also be greatly improved by some of the proposed work. Additionally, the applicant proposes to plant thirteen new trees and other vegetation around the site that would enhance, uh, the site's natural water retention capacity and provide some additional screening as well. Um, and they propose to designate the eastern half of the site an approximately ten thousand square-foot area as an area of no disturbance, which would preserve the natural features there in perpetuity. Uh, the applicant asserts that both, both of these proposals are, are consistent with the findings associated with the ZR one oh seven six five authorization. This application was referred to Staten Island Community Board Three on May second, and following a public hearing that was held on May fourteenth, the full board voted to approve the application unanimously. This concludes my presentation. Thank you, and happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm going to start with Commissioner Surlo.
Thank you. Um, you, you actually may have answered the question I had in, during your presentation, but I just want to clarify something, because in the, in the presentation itself, it only referred to the removal of fifty-nine trees.
Correct.
Um, and there was, the, the reference to the tree credits and the new trees was not obvious. So, can you, you, you mentioned thirteen new trees, which I can see in the proposed site plan where they are likely...
Predominantly along the street.
Predominantly, there were thirteen of them there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I wasn't sure exactly what that was representing, but now I understand that. But you also mentioned a hundred and forty-three tree credits or some number close to that? Early, just, uh, earlier about, you mentioned the removal of fifty-nine trees, but you mentioned tree credits, and can you explain how, what the practical implication of that is?
Sure. Uh, so, yeah, the applicant's proposing to remove fifty-nine trees worth a hundred and thirty-four tree credits, um, but they would remain compliant with, uh, the total tree credit that would be required on, on a site of, of this size even after, uh, that, that, those, those removals.
Okay.
Um, and so, the, I believe that the thirteen trees that they're proposing to plant are to satisfy screening requirements, as well as, uh, South Richmond District arterial requirements, which, uh, which require, uh, sites that are located on some of those arterial streets to, to meet certain planting.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure that the, it's not clear where the fifty-nine trees that are being removed are being removed from, and that obviously the thirteen are on the periphery of both Arthur Kill Road and, um, Veterans Road. I, I know where this is, where this is. Um, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't opening this up to view any more than it already is, and that the removal of those trees is not creating a visual, as you indicated, this is all residential all around here. So, that was my only question, but I, um, I, I know the community board would have made a bigger issue out of this too, had, had this become an issue for them, but I, I, I wasn't clear on the new trees. It wasn't clear to me, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Commissioner Murray?
I just have a question for edification purposes, because this, this happens up in the Bronx and Riverdale as well. When you say fifty-nine trees are being removed and a hundred and forty-three were required, was that because of the caliper size of the tree?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Okay. Thank you. We'll schedule this one for a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Andrew. All right. Next up.
The seventh item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a special permit in Staten Island Community District Two. Our presenter is Punit Singh. It just takes a second, one second.
Okay, cool. Well, hello, Commissioner, okay, there we go. Good afternoon, Commissioners and Chair. Um, Punit Singh, Borough Planner, the Staten Island Office, here today to present an application to update the existing Hillside Swimming Club located in Staten Island. This is a private application. The applicant is the Hillside Swimming Club, Inc. They are seeking a special permit pursuant to zoning resolution section seven four dash one three three to permit a swimming club or certain non-commercial club facility in a residential district. They are seeking this permit to rearrange the facilities on the project site, which includes constructing a new swimming pool and outdoor recreation courts, along with a reconfigured group parking facility that would improve vehicular circulation. So, this is an aerial view of the site located in Community District Two. You can see that currently the swimming pool is very close to Signs Road, nearly fronting it at just twenty-two feet away from the street line, and that the parking is in the center of the site. This creates issues for the cars and the swimmers who use the club. There are some buildings around the current parking area in the center, which are the clubhouse and snack stand, which would remain, along with some outdoor recreation courts north of that central parking area. The site is bounded to the south by Signs Road, to the west by Dinsmore Street, to the north by zoning lots which front Victory Boulevard, and to the east by Amsterdam Avenue. The site is close to Victory Boulevard, Major Thoroughfare in this part of Staten Island. It's north of the David's Wildlife Refuge, which is part of the Fresh Kills Park, and it is south of the Teleport Drive Industrial Park. So, here is the site plan where you can see the proposed swimming pool depicted by the blue polygons, and the proposed one hundred and forty-four parking spaces depicted by the yellow polygons. So, current swimming pool fronting Signs Road would be replaced with a parking space that connects to an internal roadway, which leads to additional parking spaces on the western and northern edges of the property. on the western and northern edges of the property. The pool would be pushed back towards the center of the site, and it would have a new bather preparation area and pool equipment enclosure, which corresponds to the darker gray shaded buildings around the pool. Those would be one-story, approximately fourteen feet in height. The buildings shaded in lighter gray correspond to existing buildings, clubhouse and snack stand, which would remain as is. You can also see that they are proposing new outdoor recreation courts, which would be north of the proposed swimming pool. The proposed development would devote about twenty-eight thousand square feet of the approximately three hundred and thirty-six thousand square-foot project site to the pool and its accessory facilities, and it would produce a hundred and forty-four accessory off-street parking spaces. Overall, the proposal would not result in increased capacity at the swimming club, so there would not be an increase in its current usage or traffic generated thereby. And by putting the parking closer to the curb cut on Signs Road, there would be a larger vehicle reservoir that would reduce traffic on Signs Road and reduce conflicts between the vehicles and the swimmers using the club. And then the new pool and recreation courts, if approved, would serve the community for the next several decades. So for public review, Staten Island Community Board Two sent a letter to the Chair on April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. They indicated no objection to the proposal and so waived their right to a public hearing. This is just a picture of some text from that letter indicating as such. And next, the Staten Island Borough President approved the proposed development on June third, twenty-twenty-five. Again, this is just a picture of that approval. And that is it. I am happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. I don't see any, so we will pick this one up on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Monday.
Okay, let's move to the next.
The eighth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a city map amendment in Brooklyn Community District Sixteen. Our presenter is Stephen Leonard.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Commissioners. My name is Stephen Leonard, and I'm here to present for pre-hearing review the Broadway Junction Station City Map Amendment in Ocean Hill, Brooklyn, Community District Sixteen, when our program continues. There we go. This is a joint application by the Metropolitan Transportation Authority and the New York City Department of Parks and Recreation for an amendment to the city map to adjust the boundaries of parks and streets to facilitate the expansion of the Broadway Junction Station complex and the unification of two halves of Callahan Kelly Playground. This application was certified by the department on March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five. So I wanted to give a little bit of context because there are a lot of applications in ULP right now in this general vicinity. This application that we're talking about right now, the subject area is shown in yellow. It comprises blocks fourteen forty-five and fourteen forty-six. That includes Callahan Kelly Playground, a MTA police station, and the entrance to the Broadway Junction Station complex. The locations that are highlighted in blue are the subject of the Broadway Junction PD Relocation and Plaza Project, which was certified on April twenty-first. That is a separate but coordinated application by NYPD, EDC, Decas, and Parks for site selection, acquisition, disposition actions to facilitate the relocation of the MTA police station from block fifteen forty-six and the development of neighborhood amenities called for in the East New York Plan. And then the area in purple is the location of the Perkoma Williams rezoning, which is a private application to facilitate one point two million square feet of mixed-use development. And that was certified on June second. So going back to this application, it's seeking a city map amendment to basically accomplish two main things. One is the de-mapping of a portion of Sackman Street, shown in purple on the diagram here, and then the mapping of parkland over that former street. And that helps to unify Callahan Kelly Playground. You can see this is a condition in which the park improvement is already constructed, and this application is cleaning up the city map. The second thing that this application does is shown in blue, which is to eliminate a portion of Callahan Kelly Playground as parkland from the city map. And the area that's being eliminated is the existing MTA police station and subway entrance, plus a small additional area that would facilitate a new ADA elevator for the subway station. As a reminder, the land that's occupied by the existing MTA infrastructure, the subway station entrance and the PD station, was alienated in the seventies, but it was never formally taken off of the city map. And that area is being expanded slightly, again, to accommodate a new ADA elevator. So on April twenty-second, Community Board Sixteen held a public hearing on this project. And on May sixth, they wrote a letter of support for the project. The vote was thirty in favor, zero against, and zero abstaining. And on June eleventh, the Brooklyn Borough President held a public hearing and issued a favorable recommendation on June twenty-sixth. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Great. Thanks, Stephen. Okay. Thank you. We'll pick this one up on Wednesday. Thanks very much.
The ninth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a city map amendment, UDOT designation, project approval, zoning map and zoning tax amendments in Queens Community Districts Eight and Twelve. Our presenter is Jasmenta Pawe and Shri Sih Bajra Shaya Shakya.
Thank you very much. And Shri Sih, I just want to note for the Commission that we're going to do a presentation here. And then on Wednesday, we'll do a very miniature condensed version, just as a, because we may have a different audience for Wednesday. Just, so this will be the more detailed version. And then Wednesday, we'll just do a very set-the-table sort of presentation. Okay. All right, Shri Sih, thank you.
Thank you, Gioratnik. Good afternoon, Commissioners and Chair Gioratnik. I'm here. Yeah, I'm here. I'm excited to report some updates for the Jamaica Neighborhood Plan at today's pre-hearing. So for today's review session, we would like to share a quick refresher of the Jamaica Neighborhood Plan's goals, the proposal, and also share an update on the community board's and Queens Borough President's recommendations. So the Jamaica Neighborhood Plan was certified on March twentieth of this year. The plan is an informed and considered vision for the future of this neighborhood, supporting more housing that requires affordable income-restricted units, allows for more opportunities for jobs across different industries, and identifies improvements to public spaces and the necessary infrastructure investments to help this neighborhood thrive. Over the past two years, with a strong partnership with Councilmember Dr. Natasha Williams, we have held thirty-eight public meetings and met monthly with the steering committee, made up of fifty local groups and an executive committee of city, state, and federal elected officials convened by Councilmembers Williams. Together, these efforts have shaped a vision for the future. Jamaica is prosperous thanks to its affordability and inclusivity, its diversity, and its business and investment opportunities. The plan is projected to create over twelve thousand new homes, of which approximately over four thousand homes would be permanently income-restricted and rent-regulated under the city's mandatory inclusionary housing program. The plan would also create over two million square feet of new commercial and community facility spaces, adding more than seven thousand jobs in the area. The approval of this plan would also result in the largest mandatory inclusionary housing area to be mapped in the city, in the city, a response to the city's housing crisis. To facilitate this vision, the department is proposing a set of land-use actions that include a zoning map amendment and a zoning tax amendment to support the area's growth, while ensuring it remains an affordable place to live for both current and future residents by mapping mandatory inclusionary housing, modifying the existing downtown Jamaica special district to create more opportunities for schools and open spaces, help create a better transition between industrial businesses and homes, and help create better streetscape conditions in the future. An approval of an urban development action area project and disposition approvals to facilitate the development of hundred percent affordable units on vacant, underutilized city-owned lots, and a city map amendment that would facilitate the construction of two public pedestrian plazas as part of the city's Station Plaza project. So the study area is expansive and covers approximately three hundred blocks in southeast Queens. The rezoning area includes key areas centered around downtown Jamaica, also known as Jamaica Center, and several major transit corridors that connect surrounding neighborhoods to the downtown area and provide essential access to transportation, services, jobs, and housing. The study area includes Community Districts Eight and Twelve and is represented by three different council members. As you see on this map, the majority of the study area is located within Community District Twelve, while a smaller portion to the north is located within Community District Eight. To build on Jamaica's strengths and respond to both citywide and local challenges, we are proposing a series of land-use actions we mentioned earlier, which we will recap with more detail in the next few slides. So the proposed zoning map amendment would update zoning across a two hundred and thirty-block area of Jamaica. Here on the screen is a map showing the proposed zoning changes. In the next few slides, we are going to walk through different areas of Jamaica and what the zoning changes could look like in those areas. We'll start with a recap of the zoning changes in this area we are calling Downtown Core, which is generally around Jamaica Center, north of LIRR tracks, and some portions to the south of LIRR in proximity to Jamaica Transit Hub. The photo on the left shows the existing condition of the intersection of Sutron Boulevard and Archer Avenue. The illustration on the right is the potential future development at the same location if the proposed plan is approved. Our goal here is to encourage the growth of new housing with permanently affordable units using MIH, through MIH, and support active ground-floor uses with job-generating uses close to transit-rich corridors. The proposal is to map high-density districts such as C six-four, C six-three to support development that fits within the existing context around the station, allowing flexible uses, affordable housing growth through MIH, and increased commercial and community facility VARs. Next, taking a look at the area north of the study area, including the area around Rufus King Park, along Jamaica and Hillside Avenues. Here is the view of the Hillside Avenue and Hundred and Fiftieth Street. Although today's zoning allows for medium-sized buildings, much of Hillside Avenue has remained with one-story shops and older residential buildings from before zoning rules were in place. Our goal is to increase development potential and require permanently affordable housing in new developments and expand active ground-floor uses that support job growth and community-supporting services. The proposal is to map R seven X, a medium-density residential district surrounding Rufus King Park, that would create a contextual quality housing bulk with high-floor area ratio for residential and community facility uses, and to map C four-four D, a mid-density commercial district within the core and along Hillside Avenue, to encourage mixed-use buildings. Next, we'll focus on the corridors south of the LIRR tracks, the portions of Merritt Boulevard, Gaia Brewer Boulevard, Sutron Boulevard, and Liberty Avenue. The images on the slide show Merritt Boulevard and Hundred and Fifth Road. Our goal is to require contextual mixed-use buildings to help activate pedestrian experiences on the ground level, while also requiring the new developments to provide permanently affordable housing. The proposal is to map mid-density residential districts such as R seven A, R seven X, and high-density districts such as R eight A, R eight X with MIH, ensuring affordable housing availability through new developments, and to map commercial overlays along transit corridors, bringing residents closer to essential amenities. Next, we'll look at the industrial area south of the LIRR tracks and east of Sutron Boulevard. The images are of Archer Avenue and Hundred and Fiftieth Street, looking south, showing the other side of the area that's south of these LIRR tracks. Our goal is to align zoning with the way the neighborhood has naturally developed over time with a mix of homes and businesses while allowing space for light manufacturing to support job growth. The proposal is to map paired districts such as M one-two A with R seven-two, M one-eight A with R nine-X, M one-six A with R nine-A, which combine residential zoning with light manufacturing M one districts. This approach would allow new housing in the area for the first time to coexist with local jobs, especially in an area with strong transit access. Lastly, we'll look at Jamaica's industrial areas generally located along Liberty Avenue. The eastern portion of the rezoning area is part of Jamaica's industrial business zone, where under current city policy, housing is not permitted as an effort to support and maintain quality industrial jobs in the city. Our goal is to help bolster businesses and job growth within Jamaica by supporting industrial growth in manufacturing districts within the industrial business zones. The proposal is to map a mix of districts tailored to different needs. M one-two A districts near residential areas to create a buffer from certain industrial businesses. M two-three A districts to help existing businesses grow and attract new ones. And M three-two A district to continue supporting the operations of the LIRR Hillside Rail Yard. The M one-two A and M two-three A districts were selected for their flexibility. They have higher VARs for manufacturing, commercial, and community facility uses than what exists today. This can support more modern loft-style buildings that can accommodate industrial activity alongside office space, for example. To further our goal to strengthen downtown Jamaica and its nearby major corridors, we are also proposing to expand the boundaries of the Special Downtown Jamaica District, established in two thousand and seven, depicted by the blue-shaded area to cover and extend to the entire proposed rezoning area. The proposed expansion is depicted by the pink-shaded area. Through the zoning tax amendment, we are updating the following provisions to special provisions to Special Downtown Jamaica District to exempt the school floor area to encourage more space for schools and privately-owned properties, to allow an open space bonus around Jamaica Center to expand options for open space in the future, to require enclosures on certain industrial businesses located near residential districts, and create a balance between the industrial areas and homes. The special district tax also includes other regulations pertaining to active streetscape, building articulation, and large retail uses. The proposal also includes two site-specific projects that would add more affordable housing in the area and improvement to the public realm in Jamaica Center. The city is proposing UDOT designation, UDOT project approval, and disposition of five vacant and underutilized city-owned sites located along Union Hall Street and Gaia Brewer Boulevard between Hundred and Eighth Avenue and Hundred and Tenth Avenue, organized as two scattered site clusters. Approval of these actions would result in approximately a hundred and seventeen affordable units. In the scattered site cluster one, located a block south of Hundred and Ninth Avenue, fronting Union Hall Street, with the approval of the proposed R six D district, the site would result in approximately thirty-four affordable homeownership units. Scattered site cluster two, located a block south of Hundred and Eighth Avenue along Gaia Brewer Boulevard and Union Hall Street, includes four development sites, which would result in approximately eighty-three affordable and rent-restricted rental units. The second action we have based on a specific site is Station Plaza. The New York City Department of Transportation, with support from the New York City Economic Development Corporation, is proposing a city map change to modify the boundary lines of a previously planned plaza project, Station Plaza. In two thousand and seven, the city acquired land near the LIRR station to create a public plaza of approximately point five-two acres. Since the two thousand and seven approval, the scope and design of the plaza have changed, so the proposed mapping amendment is needed to accommodate the latest designs. The plaza consists of the streetbed and sidewalks of Archer Avenue between Hundred and Forty-Fourth Place and Hundred and Forty-seventh Place, the streetbed and adjacent sidewalks of Sutron Boulevard at the approaches to Archer Avenue, and the properties along the north side of Archer Avenue between Hundred and Forty-Fourth Place and Hundred and Forty-seventh Place. These actions would support two new public plazas totaling approximately point four-five acres to enhance pedestrian access and safety, improve traffic flow, accommodate bus volumes, and provide new public open space in downtown Jamaica. Next, we'll briefly recap the environmental study and provide an update on community board and Borough President recommendations during the ULP process. So a draft environmental impact statement, or DEIS, was prepared. GCP, acting on behalf of the CPC as lead agency, issued a notice of completion of a DEIS on Friday, March fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-five. The DEIS does not identify significant adverse impacts in any of the technical areas in Gray. The DEIS does not identify significant adverse impacts in any of the technical areas in Gray. Significant adverse impacts are identified by the categories shown in purple on the right. Mitigation measures are identified in the DEIS and will be further refined for the FEIS. Under ULAH requirements for public review, this application was referred out to Community Boards Eight and Twelve for sixty days following certification on March twentieth, and then to the Borough President for thirty days. We will go over their recommendations in the following slides. The Community Board Eight covers only the northern side of Hillside Avenue within the study area. The board held a public hearing and vote on May fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-five with seventeen in favor, eighteen against, and one abstaining, and issued a recommendation to disapprove of Jamaica Neighborhood Plan, sharing a list of concerns that included the lack of parking for local businesses, lack of green space for the neighborhood, shadow concerns over neighboring properties, inadequate public transportation, and related infrastructure needed to sustain the future increase in residents. The Community Board Twelve covers majority of the study area. The community board held a vote on May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, passing a resolution to disapprove with conditions. The lists of their concerns are shown on the next few slides that include concerns over high-density developments, adverse impact on the neighborhood's air quality, traffic congestion, public transit, infrastructure, public health, and overall affordability, health impacts caused by high-rise developments resulting in respiratory health conditions like asthma, challenges for schools and hospitals to accommodate growing population and placing undue burden on local infrastructure such as strained water and sewer systems affecting residents' quality of life, and concerns over the affordability level that doesn't match lower-income levels of the community, making units inaccessible to longtime residents. On June fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, Queens Borough President Donovan Richards held a public hearing on Jamaica Neighborhood Plan, and we just received the recommendation this afternoon. That's why we don't have that in the package yet or up in the slide for now, but we will be sharing a summary of the recommendations at the hearing this Wednesday. In summary, the city is seeking this set of these land use actions to furthering several goals: to address extraordinary housing needs in the city by increasing residential densities where appropriate around a major transit hub in Queens, and to raise housing production along residential corridors, to map mandatory affordable housing where it does not exist today, to modify outdated zoning districts to match commercial and retail needs in the area, and to implement good urban design principles that would improve the public realm, improve the public realm. We also recognize that while some community needs are addressed through land use changes, such as updated zoning to encourage new schools and to require new buildings to include permanently affordable income-restricted homes, other community needs would be addressed through direct investments to enhance infrastructure, streetscapes, and open space. As the Jamaica Neighborhood Plan proceeds through ULAH, we will continue to work with elected officials and community leaders to identify how the city can expand these investments and develop a comprehensive plan that meets the moment by advancing New York City's housing needs and investment in the future of Jamaica. That concludes our presentation. Thank you for listening. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Swasti. And I will just note for the commission, you now have copy of the Borough President's recommendation, which is an approval with conditions, just for the record here. Okay, thank you to you and the entire team for all the incredible effort that has gotten us to this moment. Obviously, we'll pick this up for a public hearing on Wednesday, but let me see if there are any questions for you before we get to that. Commissioner Sorio?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the update and congratulations on, you know, what I thought was a really thorough report on the status of the project, very useful. I just wanted to follow up on a couple of things and then, you know, two questions. The first question is just following up on some of my questions when we certified it. Number one, on the indirect significant adverse impacts to open space, you know, you know that you're still working on the mitigation strategies, but I'm wondering if there's anything you can, like, give us a heads up in what we should expect or more or less where you are with that. I know in the quick glimpse at the Borough President's recommendations, it sounds as though there's a significant amount of them associated with increasing the open space system, in addition to the incentive which you've listed there, which I think is acknowledged. But that's the first one. And then, even though there's not a significant adverse impact, you know, the FEIS, sorry, the DEIS highlights as an important a potential displacement of residents and businesses, including businesses in the IBC, and so I'm wondering if you are going to be addressing them, again, acknowledging and underlining that according to the DEIS, that's not a significant adverse impact. It's just that, you know, the numbers are considerable. So that's my first kind of question to me. Let me stop there and...
Yeah, thank you so much for that question. I'm wondering if Jasmine would be able to provide more clear answers?
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. So just starting on the, talking about the industrial business zone and the businesses there, and then Lynn can talk more about open space. And so I think the DEIS had outlined kind of our rationale and thinking about the industrial areas in that because the zoning is going to create more space to help build more space in these industrial areas, that many of the businesses have kind of that flexibility to move into these spaces now, which is something that doesn't exist today. That area has been very stagnant and growth has been very limited. I think one of the responses was to Commissioner Rampershad around just kind of what the business jobs look like, and when we took a look, you know, everything has pretty much remained very stagnant. And so that industrial area is not growing today, where in the future, you know, we do hope that the flexibility of the zoning can create more space for industrial areas.
I want, thank you for that, because I think that's true. I do believe that this has the potential to be a destination, a mixed-use destination location for people who are going there to do business and interact with those companies. It's just that, you know, in the DEI, according to the DEIS, on the residential side, just for a quick second, there's like ninety potential residents in twenty-nine building units potentially displaced. We will talk about that in a second, but an estimated of one thousand eight hundred forty-seven employees in one hundred and seventy-four firms right now, that I think need to be acknowledged. And so I agree with you, and I think that that's a great framing, but it's, I wonder if there's a zoning-specific opportunity to make sure they can stay and that they're, you know, there's some type of preference, otherwise they will be displaced. And so that's one. And then in addition to that, I just wanted to highlight the three hundred and thirteen workers within the IBC. We need to make sure that they can stay, and so I really encourage you to consider that. I know that that's not a significant adverse impact, but these numbers are important. And if we don't address the needs of these working-class New Yorkers, you know, how can they be able to even afford housing, which I know is the larger sort of like goal here?
Right. And I think one quick note about, because you had mentioned preference, there is a community preference that exists today through HPD's, you know, Housing Connect Program. I know it did get reduced because of recent, yes, legal challenges, that's the word I'm looking for, but there is a percentage that exists today.
Fair enough, fair enough.
And then let me pass it to Lynn to talk more about open space.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Lynn, same from the Queens Office of City Planning. I think for, I think it's true, like, real estate in New York City is at such a premium, and we're trying to balance all these needs and housing being sort of forefront in our minds right now. But even so, in this plan, we do have the open space bonus in some of the higher districts to incentivize more public open space to, you know, where there is a large amount of housing. And throughout this process, and we will continue to talk with the Parks Department and local elected official where opportunities of existing parks for expansions or improvements, those are things that we are looking to address as part of this plan.
Thank you. I look forward to seeing, you know, how could that, what could that look like? Understand, I understand the constraints, but I want to elevate that as a main, a big priority. Then the other thing is, kind of like in connection with what I read from the comments in the community board, I mean, we'll hear from the public on Wednesday, but I'm wondering if you can share a little bit your response. I heard a lot of concerns associated with quality of life and environmental conditions, even environmental justice, and I'm wondering if you can share a little bit, you know, more or less, what's, how are you processing some of these comments? You know, to your credit, I think that some of the urban design provisions in the plan address the impact of the buildings that are coming up right now, which is not necessarily, which are not necessarily too high or too dense, but the quality of the architecture and the urban design is very low. And so to your credit, I see the potential to address that, but we have to be intentional, once again, in terms of improving the quality of life of the people who live there now. And so I heard a lot of concerns associated with that, and I'm wondering if you can help us share with us some of your preliminary responses to what they said.
Yeah, I don't know if Jasmine wants to add to this, but I think, yes, we definitely heard a lot of sort of feedback and input from the community that, like, currently there are services that the city can do better, you know, so that it could, to elevate their quality of life, and we are bringing those issues to all the respective agencies and try to resolve those as this process goes along. But I think additionally with this plan, it is sort of incentivizing or to encourage development in this area where, you know, we have new building rules. So for instance, DEP has the Unified Storm Rule Retention Program where, you know, any new developments that are on a site that's particularly larger, like twenty thousand and larger, is required to implement sort of retention tanks, right? So things that are not happening now in development is, you know, would be required in the future developments, and so that in effect would improve some of that stormwater effect and infrastructure that's there. So I think that's, that's one thing that we see, like, this plan, a positive thing that this plan can bring to this area, just because we do have new rules in place and the new buildings that are being built would have higher standards, and that in effect can, you know, potentially bring better quality of life to the area.
Yeah, of course. And then just to add one more thing to that, you know, throughout the neighborhood plan, one of the areas where we heard a lot of that concern, especially when it comes to like environmental justice, was the industrial areas. And so with the industrial areas, we worked very closely with like a group of residents from that area who advocated for just kind of what can we do through zoning to help create that better transition between the industrial area and the homes that are very, you know, across the streets in some areas. And so part of the things that we can do through zoning is in our special district tax where we included enclosure rules so that within proximity of those industrial areas, those homes, new industrial businesses do have to be enclosed, and they range from a number of industrial businesses to make sure that there is that consideration for environmental justice there.
Thank you. That's, I think that that's fair and important. I want to underscore the importance of addressing that. I'm concerned, you know, going back to the previous point, like, how do we strike a balance between stronger environmental controls while at the same time being mindful that a lot of these businesses operate in very tight margins? And so what are the opportunities to, again, help them, you know, increase their sustainability, but at the same time stay and thrive? And so a lot of it in my mind has to do with stronger requirements for industrial uses there that at least take care of potential speculation and make sure that the neighborhood, as a mixed-use neighborhood, could continue to grow. But again, you know, those are some of the questions that I have, and I appreciate your responses. This is very useful, and I look forward to hearing what the public is thinking on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rampershad.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm going to wait till Wednesday for the majority of my questions. I just have a couple of quick questions. Will DEP and DOT be at the meeting on Wednesday? And the reason I bring that up is I want to find two things out. For DOT, along Jamaica Avenue right now, from Sutton to One Sixty-eight, you cannot drive with a vehicle, there's all bus lanes. Will they come up with a new plan with this future development coming on? Because, you know, people still want to drive their cars, and you have to go through a maze to get to the shopping district along Jamaica Avenue, and I'm sure this is going to have a major impact on those businesses. Number two, with DEP, will they have a fast-track program for development within this area? And I'm aware of the twenty-five thousand square foot, where it gets triggered with that, and I know the process, and I know it's a lengthy process at that to comply with DEP's rules and regulations. So I'd just like to know, will there be a fast-track, if they can be here or have someone at least respond to that? And my last question, Station Plaza, I see the rendering here. I'm just curious, is there a more detailed plan that you have that shows more lighting? And where does it fall in the phase of this development? Is it going to happen towards the end, the beginning, or is there a timeline, a more specific timeline on that? And the rest I'll leave for when, I'm sure a lot of community board members are going to voice their concern. I read some of the documents that are in our package, so I have a good idea how they feel, and just looking forward to their feedback on this. So if you can give me a response on those, I appreciate it.
Sure. And just so that everyone's aware, on Wednesday, we're going to have EDC, who's going to do a very brief presentation on Station Plaza, so they'll be here to answer any Station Plaza questions. We'll also have HPD, who will be here to talk about their UDAP action, and they will also have the developers there to answer questions for the project as well. On your questions, though, we will talk to DOT and DEP to see if we can get answers back.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Benjamin?
Yeah, following up on Commissioner Rampershad, I would request that DEP be here to address the capital plan. As you know, the area south of Archer, where the concrete batching facilities and some of the industrial uses are, and they're cheek by jowl with some residential, but the issue there is and has remained that when it rains, the streets are pretty impassable. And so I know that in some of the documents, there was discussion about DEP's drainage plans for the area, but I'd like a better idea from DEP what that would look like, because at current, as I said, when it rains, the level, the lack of sewers and the level of the water table combined, because of the Jamaica water supply issue, mean that the water meets the sidewalk. So I have some questions for them about what they're doing, when they're going to do it, and how they envision, if they are talking about raising, which they've done in places like Coney Island, they're talking about raising the sidewalk levels, how are the older buildings that remain going to tie into that new system?
Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin. We'll discuss with DEP to see if they're able to join us Wednesday.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, well, we will pick this one up on Wednesday. Look forward to hearing from the public, and thank you again for all of the hard work. Wonderful. Okay, Madam Secretary, let's move on to number ten.
Okay. The tenth item on our agenda is a city council modification scope determination for Garvin Vegas Apartments Senior Housing. The city council proposes to modify the zoning tax amendment to Appendix F, removing MIH Option Two, and staff believe this modification is within scope.
Okay, scope determination, modifying MIH, going to seek consent by a voice vote here to send a scope determination letter to the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Okay. The ayes have it, Madam Secretary.
The eleventh item on our agenda is a city council modification scope determination for One Oh Nine Marcus Garvey Boulevard, LSGD. The city council proposes to modify the zoning tax amendment to Appendix F, removing MIH Option Two and adding Option Three, and staff believe this modification is within scope.
Again, seeking an assent by a voice vote to send that letter, making a scope determination to the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Okay, ayes have it.
The twelfth item on our agenda is a city council modification scope determination for North Seventh Street rezoning. The city council proposes to modify the zoning tax amendment to Appendix F, removing MIH Option Two, and staff believe this modification is within scope.
Okay. Third and final one, we will seek consent by a voice vote here. I just send that scope determination letter to the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Okay, approved, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Future votes for consideration on Wednesday, July second. Staff have prepared reports on modular building apartment duplex interior landmark. Also for consideration is Fifty Fifty-One Island Avenue, Snad, and Staten Island Community District Eight, or the Bronx Community, the Bronx Community District Eight, apologies. Briefing materials were included in your weekend materials, and Twenty-three Sixty Broadway authorization, which was presented and discussed at the June sixteenth review session. Lastly, for consideration on Wednesday, July second, staff have prepared reports for Lenox Hill Lenox Hill Hospital. There are additional testimonies and public comments in your materials. I'll note the authorization will be laid over from vote. Aska Mohedin is here to present.
Great, hello, Aska.
Department of City Planning staff supports the requested actions. The proposed redevelopment of Lenox Hill Hospital presents a critical investment in an established healthcare institution that has served the Upper East Side and greater New York City community for years. The department recognizes that redevelopment is necessary to modernize the hospital's infrastructure and provide state-of-the-art healthcare in a purposeful facility that meets current industry standards. The requested zoning map amendment is appropriate, given the institutional character of the block and the presence of similarly scaled community facility and commercial buildings along the avenues in the area. The proposed rezoning would extend the ten F A R community facility use allowed on the Park Avenue side of the site to the rest of the block and accommodate hospital's programmatic needs to grow in place. The department also supports the proposed zoning tax amendment and special permit. The special permit would facilitate floor area and bulk modifications for an existing nonprofit or voluntary hospital in a limited geography that provides a significant public benefit. The requested bulk modifications would facilitate an efficient and integrated hospital campus, large support plates necessary to accommodate modern medical technologies, essential mechanical space, and design flexibility within the full block site. Additional floor area is critical to meet the hospital's programmatic and operational needs and would enable the hospital to modernize outdated facilities and meet current healthcare standards. The proposed development would convert all patient rooms to single-bedded rooms, upgrade operating rooms, expand the emergency department, and provide essential public home improvements such as all-street ambulance bays and bright-sized loading docks. These improvements would enhance patient outcomes, reduce infection risks, and ensure that the continued delivery of high-quality care to the community. The department further supports the zoning authorization for a transit improvement bonus. The proposed station improvements at the Lexington Avenue Seventy-Seven Street Station, including a new A D A accessible elevator, widened stairs, and circulation enhancements, will improve transit access and safety. Taken together, the requested actions would enable the hospital to provide a modern and efficient facility. Located in an area surrounded by similar medical uses such as doctors' offices and clinics, it is critical that the hospital be able to grow in place to ensure continued care and maintain its role as an essential healthcare anchor for the neighborhood, city, and the region. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Aska. Okay, thank you very much, and we will, we'll be voting on that item on Wednesday.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Future votes for July sixteenth, the Landmarks Preservation Commission, L P C, filed designation reports for the former Whitney Museum of American Art and for the former Whitney Museum of American Art interiors. Materials were shared in your weekend materials, and reports will be shared ahead of July sixteenth. Okay. Post-hearing follow-ups. First, we have fifty-six oh two, fifty-six oh four Broadway rezoning, which had a hearing at the June eighteenth public meeting. Yafi Schaefer-Soul is on Zoom to present.
Good afternoon.
Hello. Hi.
This is the post-hearing follow-up for the five-six oh two, five-six oh four Broadway rezoning private application. Are you able to, okay, fantastic. I just wanted to make sure you could see the slide. Thank you. The required, the requested actions include zoning text amendment from M one-one to R seven-three with a C two-three commercial overlay, as well as zoning text amendment to appendix F to establish an M I H area. The community board and the Bronx Borough President both submitted favorable recommendations for this project, and there were no additional questions at the June eighteenth public hearing. The Bronx office, too, as well, submits a recommendation in favor of this application. That's all I have for you.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that. Great.
Thanks, Yafi. Okay. Next, we have J F K Conduit Logistics Center de-mapping, which also had a hearing at the June eighteenth public meeting. Haim Simon is here to present.
All right, Haim. Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
All right. Today, I'm presenting the J F K Conduit Logistics Center de-mapping project in Queens Community District Thirteen. This project was certified on April seventh and is back for post-hearing. This is a de-mapping project to facilitate the construction of a two-story commercial warehouse with sixty-six parking spaces. The commission's public hearing was held on June eighteenth. The applicant is requesting the de-mapping and acquisition of portions of three paper streets. The Department of City Planning recommends approving this action for the following reasons. The action unencumbered land on map streets which have never been built and which have no plans to be built out, and the de-mapping will return city-owned land to productive use and facilitate a development that is appropriate for the area. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Next, we have nineteen forty-six East Seventh Street rezoning, which had a hearing at the June eighteenth public meeting. Ina Guzenfeld is on Zoom to present.
Good afternoon, Chair Gerodnik and Commissioners. I'm here to provide the department's recommendation on this application, which was certified into U L A R P on March third and had its public hearing on June eighteenth. The department supports approval of the proposed actions. One moment, I seem to be having technical difficulties.
No problem. We can hear you and see you, just so you know.
I'm sorry. Okay. Got it. The department supports a requested zoning map amendment and text amendments intended to facilitate one hundred percent affordable, moderate-income senior housing in an area of high need. Rezoning to R six A and R seven A will allow medium-density development at this location, which the department believes is appropriate, given proximity to a wide street, Avenue S, and multiple public transportation options. The zoning text amendment will ensure M I H provision with permanent affordability as well as increasing the permitted F A R for community facility buildings. These actions will also bring multiple properties in the, within the project area into zoning compliance. Thank you. That concludes my recommendation.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks, Ina. Okay, on five fifteen East Seventh Avenue, there were follow-up slides provided in your materials. We will be joined by Matthew at the review session on July fourteenth. Lastly, for post-hearing follow-ups, three fifty Park Avenue, there were comments and testimonies in your weekend materials. We will be joined by Ally at the next review session on July fourteenth.
Great, thank you. And what else have you got for us on today's calendar, Madam Secretary?
No other items today, Chair.
Well, that comports with my understanding as well, so with that, we will adjourn, and I will thank you all for your time and attention today, and we'll pick this up Wednesday at ten o'clock. Thank you.
The time is three thirty-five P M.